Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everyone. Okay. Item number three. Can I get a motion to consider and act upon the Charter Revision Commission’s final report approved on August 1st, 2022?
Shalom.
It was seconded.
Okay. Item is on the floor. So, we have the resolutions here. I know there’s been a lot of information that’s been sent out to the Board, and a lot of input has come in from the community regarding errata changes. I know RTM member Bill Gerber sent some stuff in, and Kathleen Griffin and some others, regarding just errata changes, which, just for the public’s edification, that just means typographical issues, nothing substantive, just to make sure that if somebody forgot to put a word in, or if it’s not very clear, if there’s not a footnote that’s clear, things of that nature. So, I know that Attorney Mednick has been working on those items, so there was some extra stuff that came out, just so that people could have that updated information. So, we are, this resolution before us, that is, I believe, each of our places is, and just, again, for the public’s edification, this process, obviously, starting almost a year ago, when the Board of Selectmen took the report from the Charter Revision Commission, we, I think we spent two or three meetings discussing it at length, and then sending back items to the Commission to further review and send back to us. So, obviously, all three of us were at those, at that charter meeting, where they took up those items, reviewed them, and then deliberated, and maybe made some adjustments in some areas. So, we were all in this room, actually, or on WebEx for that meeting. So, I think we’re all very familiar regarding that. So, this is, I guess, a compilation of the items that they sent back for us to accept. So, I think I’m going to hand it over to you, Attorney Mednick, because you’re the one who had the charge of that.
Thank you, Madam First Select Person. I just will do a brief summary. I’m not going to get into all the details, since the three of you were at the meetings with the Charter Revision Commission. But I want to talk about the process a little bit, and what we went through, just for the record, so that it becomes as clear as can be.
As a point of information, there was some information that was just sent to us from 2:00 on.
I’ll talk about it.
Seen, so is that what you’re?
I will give some background, and I will conclude with going through the four points that were made there.
He’s going to go through all those items.
Okay, but I just, to be clear, I haven’t seen any of what was sent from 2:00 on, so I just didn’t have a chance to look at it.
There’s nothing that came after 2:00, to my knowledge.
I think there were some items that were just, some slight edit, like errata edits, nothing, there’s nothing substantive. First of all, there’s no substantive changes.
And I’ll go through it in detail, they’re pretty elementary.
Okay, but, and what you’re reading from, just to be clear, we have not seen that?
This was sent out to you?
No, no, the...
These are just my notes for myself.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is not a form...
I’m just trying to catch myself up on where we are.
I’m going to have to take the Fifth Amendment, if you keep asking me questions, but they just, so, thank you.
Please proceed, and if there’s any additional questions...
Thank you.
After he’s finished, I’ll open it up.
And I’ll just talk for a few minutes, because the business is at hand. So, I want to talk about the process a little bit. I wanted to thank, first of all, the Charter Commission, I see the Chair is here, Brian Cafarelli, and John Winn is here as well. It was just an outstanding group. I work with, I’ve done over 30 charters in the last few years, and I have to tell you, this was a really outstanding group of members. You had real strengths. We had a couple lawyers, sometimes I think that’s a problem. In this case, that was not a problem, it was really very helpful. We had people who were just really good editors and readers, and I just want to thank all of them for the work that they did in this process. I also want to thank the three of you, the Board of Select Persons. I think that the First Select Person, who I only got to know last June, has just been outstanding, an outstanding leader throughout this process. She has shown a willingness to stand firm when that was necessary, and a willingness to retreat, and to compromise, and to find common ground where necessary, all based on fact, based on what was presented in the record, to make this process work well, for me as counsel, and for the Commission as well. Tom Flynn, I want to say that, as a selectman, it’s been an honor, a pleasure getting to know you. I think Tom and I probably drank the same water growing up, he grew up in Wilkett, I grew up in Waterbury. I don’t know if we had the same reservoirs, but Tom’s guidance on the budget, guidance on just the general operations, the government with his vast experience, has been really helpful to me, and I appreciate his guidance throughout the process. And Nancy Lefkowitz, I want to thank you for the role you’ve played in, as we’ve been bringing this plane into the airport. There’s a lot of things that have gotten resolved in the last few weeks, and I want to express my appreciation to you for the role you have played in that regard. The leadership of the Board of Select Persons as the appointing authority, later tonight, I’m going to be with another one of my appointing authorities in Hartford, nine-member body, so it’s not too bad, as opposed to the 30-member New Haven Board of Alders. It has been just terrific in this process. They’ve took this process seriously from day one, and they have contributed to the final product, I believe, that is before them this evening, and the work of the Commission throughout those months. The Commission first met not quite a year ago, it’ll be a year in September, September 22nd. They had 22 formal meetings. At many of those meetings, if not most of those meetings, there was public comment, a lot more public comment than is required. There’s only two public hearings required by Charter Commissions, one at the beginning of the process, and one at the end of this process. This Commission really went out of its way to listen to the public, to hear from the public, to change course where necessary, and as you know, they did change course. They had a direction they were taking on governance, and they listened carefully to people who testified, right up to the last meeting, as you know, where they made some significant changes in the document. The process was comprehensive. It was exhaustive. I won’t say exhausting, it was exhaustive. It really was a very broad-based process. We had a number of experts from all municipalities throughout the state of Connecticut, who spent time with the Commission, talking about different forms of government, which led to some of the issues that they did address, and, you know, including the issue that we dealt with all the way through the end, the size of a legislative body, what’s an appropriate size for a legislative body, which is a matter for some debate. And they were just terrific sessions. We actually had some shared sessions between some of my Charter Commissions, including this one, on some of these subjects, and they went through all these subjects in a very, very serious way, not, they didn’t speed through it, they did it with all deliberate speed. They went through the process in a very deliberative and paced, well-paced manner, where they discussed issues that ranged from the town seal provisions in the state of Connecticut, to budget procedures, to comparative data on the structures of government in RTM communities and other communities that are similarly situated, size-wise, population-wise, to the town, and they looked very carefully at those governance issues. They looked at the capital budget process, and made some changes there. They looked at the town, the issue of professional administration, and you know the result that’s in the document right now as well, and looked at a lot of different alternatives to try to come out with the best possible CAO provision that they could look at. They looked at big cities, Stanford, and Hartford, and Bridgeport, and New Haven, they looked at smaller communities, Darien, Stratford, like-sized communities, Bristol, New Britain, Danbury, West Haven, Milford, and East Hartford, and they did a very, very good job as they went through that process. So, I don’t want to go through too much more detail than that, because then I will have read the entire Charter to you, and will feel like we’re spending a little much time in a place of worship, so I’ll be, I will try to be brief. I want to point out that one group of people that I left out in the opening, and then I’ll reserve for one last person I will talk to about in a moment, before I defer back to the Commission, there was a very active public. You have public hearings, public comment, and in Fairfield, it’s public opinion. And there’s just a lot of people that had a lot of opinions, and a lot to say throughout this process, and I don’t take a posture of agreeing or disagreeing, because I’m the arbiter and the lawyer, trying to help bridge the gap between the Commission, the Board of Select Persons, and public observations and comments. And we had some really, really outstanding people in this town that kept pressure on the process, throughout the process, and that’s a, that is healthy, even sometimes when it’s not. It was overall a very healthy and good process, and I want to thank all those members. And so, that leads me to the document that the selectperson asked me about a moment ago, that I sent out late, earlier this afternoon, I guess you didn’t get it till after 2:00. And there were several changes that are made in the document, and I’ll walk you through it. The first change was a real typo. In Section 2.3(c)(2(b), I neglected to change the 30 members of the RTM to 40, and thanks to Judy Ewing, I’m sure somebody else would have caught it if Judy wasn’t the first, we fixed that. So, that’s, that is errata number one. Errata number two, and the prize goes to Kathleen Griffin for pointing this out, two minor ones. One, I discovered that in Section 2.5, defined term “town office” was not capitalized, that is now capitalized. And Ms. Griffin also pointed out that one of the footnotes, and I’m the one who introduced these footnotes to your charter, I did not update it to include that the Section D on filling vacancies on the Board of Select Persons was actually not just a recodification, but a modification. And I left that out, and I fixed that, and so that is errata number two. Errata number three was also one that came from Kathleen Griffin, and this is dealing with the appointment powers, Section 4.3(c) on the First Select Person. As you may recall, there was a period where I had done a draft of a alternate form of government, so that the Board of Select Persons would be having their last meeting, last term here, if that approach went through, so that there was just going to be a First Select Person balanced with an RTM, that would be a more robust, mature legislative body, smaller legislative body as well. And during that period of time, I consolidated some provisions, and this was an example of one that was consolidated, and the language of the Board of Selectmen was restored, but the deletion of the clause in the powers of the First Select Person was not, and in this catch by Kathleen Griffin, thank you very much again, we have deleted that clause, which should not be in that provision. The next change that we made, and this again was, I think, brought up by Kathleen Griffin again, and I think RTM member Mr. Gerber joined in on the discussion, and the Commission actually discussed this at our last meeting, in Section 8.1(b). Both these chapters, seven and eight, Articles seven and eight, are chapters that probably, in another Charter Revision, should be looked at again, in terms of how the departments are structured, that’s a totally different process. And I had noticed that there were a couple of aberrational provisions in the Board and Commission section, that kind of list departments, or at least in one case, a department. The Commission ultimately decided not to change it, it’s been that way, let’s fix it. The town attorney actually came up with a solution this morning, so that we make it clear that while the Department of Public Works is listed in this section of the Charter, it is not subject to appointment by the Board of Select Persons. So, we’ve broken down the appointments, so that Section 8.6 is no longer covered, it’s just included in the list of things that you’ll find in this section, and I would recommend, in the future, that you move that section out. But without public testimony on it, I think the Commission made a determination that it just wasn’t something you should make a decision about, because there may have been some historic reason why the section was the way it was, and we had no testimony to the contrary. The last point was a minor point I made, I deleted a couple words in 10.5 on effective date, because it just didn’t read clear, and I took out the word “and,” and replaced it with the word “the” for entity, and the “or the” was eliminated, because it just didn’t make sense in the way the sentence was structured. So, those are the minor errata changes, and that is it. Do you want me to talk about the process at this point, or where we’re going, or do you want to start debating the issue?
What do you mean by that?
Well, there’s no, we’re at the end of the process, is what I mean.
I know that, but you mean, I thought you meant after this process.
Yeah, what goes on afterwards. I mean, the resolution’s pretty clear of what goes on next.
Right.
Yeah.
I think we could probably talk about that later.
Done, done.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. I’m going to open it up, so just to get us focused. So, these are basically, as you’ve just highlighted, some minor changes here and there, errata changes, but this is the document that we sent to CRC, that then was sent back to us, this is it. These are the items. So, do you, I’ll, go ahead.
Thanks. First of all, I wanted, since you took some time, Attorney Mednick, to thank you, everybody, I want to thank you for your work on the town’s behalf. It’s been good to get to reacquainted with somebody from Waterbury. Mr. Baldwin, I think, I want to thank you for your efforts in mediation and management, and actually teaching Attorney Mednick about the nuances of the town of Fairfield, for guiding us through the process. Secondly, more of a question, I wanted to confirm, you just went through some errata changes, and in a document this big, there are going to be, I hate the word “errata,” it sounds too legal, it’s really typos.
Minor correct, yeah.
Really, I call it copy editing.
Yeah.
And I think that it’s, first of all, we’re very fortunate to have people in the community to assist in that process, and I appreciate their efforts, and thank them for that. I just want to confirm that none of those changes, the copy editing, as I’ll call it, changed any of the substance of what the CRC voted on and sent before us, correct?
Not at all.
Okay.
Not at all.
I just wanted to confirm that.
To that end, I would love a conversation around, and you mentioned Kathleen Griffin, because she had brought it up, so it occurred to me to look further. She brought up issues around the Board of Selectmen and the vacancies and filling that. Can you talk about, it would be great to know for the record, and just to clarify for my own, what the difference is now? We didn’t have a chance to discuss some of those changes, based on timeframe, based on what Kathleen had pointed out. What’s new here? What, and I’d love to hear from Attorney Baldwin, because I believe you were the one that had the back and forth, in terms of taking away, it seems to take away the ability by petition, which state statute allows, for the community to be able to petition for a vote, to have a voice, so could you just talk about that?
Sure, I’d be happy to. So, that is, in essence, the change here. There was a desire expressed by John Matoa, Commissioner Matoa, and others familiar with that issue from past situations or circumstances, and that desire was to avoid a special election which can take place in the middle of the summer, or August, what have you, and it’s rather disruptive. It requires petitions to be signed, and the idea, which was agreed to, and I believe everyone, well, everyone was on board to it, was to eliminate the possibility of having a special petition and an election, you know, in the middle of the summer, or what have you, and instead have it operate such that if the vacancy occurs with sufficient time for the normal primary caucusing and candidate endorsement process to take place, that it will automatically be on the ballot for the next municipal election, regardless of whether that is for the office of first, or for the members of the Board of Selectmen and other municipal offices, it could be very well, in this election cycle, for example, which does not have any such offices open. So, that’s the key difference here.
The concern being, and I appreciate the expense to the town, the challenges involved in a special election, and certainly remember what had happened when this became an issue and a problem we were trying to solve, or I imagine the CRC was trying to solve when they looked at this, and your recommendations, but the concern here is that it, and what Ms. Griffin had brought up in her emails, is it just does take away potentially the ability of the people to petition to vote, which, again, per state statute. So, I’d be curious, as an exercise, what would happen if we took out language, and I don’t have a suggestion on, if we were to eliminate the language under the vacancies D1 and 2, what that would do to the...
If I could address that, and add one more thing to this mix, and that is, under the current Charter version, there is no special election unless there is this petition. And so, that means that if there is no petition, it will not be filled at all by an election. For that matter, if the Board of Select Persons vote, the two remaining selectpersons vote to make a replacement within 30 days, that would avoid, under the current Charter, a special election. Under this provision, it’s automatic that the election will take place in the next cycle, and there is no need for a petition, and it also affords the Board of Select Persons, the remaining members of the Board, to put somebody in as a replacement, knowing that that office is going to be up for election in the next coming cycle.
Right, but again, problematically, it’s possible for two years, and while that would work if a minority, for the majority party, if a minority member...
It wouldn’t, I have to correct you, it would not be for two years.
Potentially.
No, it could not be for that. It would be potentially, by my estimation, whenever the candidate choosing process begins, which may be March or May, off the top of my head. So, if you miss that, let’s say the vacancy occurred now, in August, you would not have time to put the person on the ballot, so it would go on the next election ballot, but that’s less than two years. In the situation that happened last time, that office was vacated with three full years remaining, and that absolutely cannot happen now. It would have to happen roughly 18 to 19 months in order for, to avoid that election cycle, but you would still go to the next one, so it would be less than two years.
And if these two provisions, 1 and 2, these two clauses were to come out, does it...
Well, that’s the other thing I wanted to address, and that is, according to Attorney Mednick, and you can correct me if I’m wrong, at this stage in your proceedings, you have the ability to accept or reject what has been presented to you. You do not have the opportunity, as was explained when you were deciding what to send back to the CRC, you do not have the ability to make minor amendments and changes to the document. You must either accept or reject what has been presented to you by the CRC in whole or in part, right, Steve? And you can, you want to elaborate on what that means, in whole or in part?
I’m sorry. All that means is that if you reject these provisions, what would remain is what is currently in the Charter. The current Charter provision would remain intact.
Just provision.
Yeah.
So, for instance, as a point of information, I could not move to remove Clause, or Article 1 or 2?
You could, we’d have to take a look at the implications, because I’m not sure what Clause, we’d have to look at what Clause 3 means in comparison, but it would resurrect whatever is in the document, we’d have to look and see whether Clause 3 conflicts with anything that’s in the current document, if it did, you would probably want to eliminate Clause 3 as well. But what you do by eliminating the, anything that is new, you resurrect what is in the current Charter.
Which was flawed.
Yeah.
Okay. That was my question around the vacancy issue.
Can I follow up on that for a minute?
Yeah.
It sounds as though the update in the Charter, and this was kind of, brings it more in line with what we do for other municipal offices where there’s a vacancy, is that correct?
That is correct. That’s the default mechanism for all other boards and commissions.
I would argue to that point, if I may, and that’s, I appreciate that, on the one hand, but on the other, this is only a body of three. It does potentially set up a situation where there’s an imbalance of power, so while going back to the default of what’s currently in the Charter is not preferred, I do think it’s something that we perhaps should look at again at some point in the future.
I don’t, I don’t, I wasn’t arguing.
Yeah, and I was just as a counter.
But I, you did say something that I don’t...
You did say something that I don’t fully understand. When you say it sets up a...
Potential.
Potential issue of balance of power. Since this body does have a minority representation clause, what would that potential issue be?
Well, that the majority party has a chance, really, to determine on their own, without any minority input of what, who that candidate would be. So, again, it’s not for today, because there are too many broad implications for changing it, and again, deferring back to current statute, or current language.
Before that, yeah, and before, thank you for that. My experience, and I can only go by the experience that I’ve had from doing this, in years past, there was an agreement between the parties. Now, I think that got messed up during this, the issue with the Board of Selectmen last time, with the petition and all that, after the appointment. But in years past, before that incident, there was an agreement between the parties that they would take the other party’s recommendation certainly into consideration. There might have been some back and forth that I’m not aware of behind the scenes, right? But there was, I cannot ever remember a situation where the party’s recommendation was completely flatly ignored to fill a vacancy like that.
Codifying would really, but again, for future...
Yeah, thank you, though.
Thank you. I have some, I do have... I do, and so it’s, so I can understand how we approach this. These whereas clauses set out to establish record, which I appreciate, but seem different. The whereas clauses, and by the way, I do believe there are some minor typos. The second-to-last whereas on the first page is, it says “final report on August 5th, 2021,” it should be 2022. I do believe, did the, it’s a question, did the Commission submit its final report, or were these, is it considered a revision on August 5th?
Final report.
So, it’s final report, okay. The difference, and can you just confirm that the dates between June 13th, when the Commission completed its deliberations, there was that much time between the deliberation period and when the transmittal of the draft report was submitted? I would just want to just check those dates, since we’re going on the record.
That is correct.
Okay. And also, so, I guess I would say, similar to how we looked at the resolution that we sent to the CRC, I would urge us to parse out the whereas clauses, approve these, and then take each item in the resolution as a single, as single resolution, so six, six different ones. So, I don’t know if that’s something we need to move, or if that, based on how we voted and acted the last time, we’re able to do that. If these whereas clauses need to be attached to each resolution, the six being the “be it further resolved” clauses, if we could take those as individual items. it further resolved clauses, if we could take those as individual items.
Can you elaborate to the reasoning why?
Sure, the whereas establishes record, whereas I think the resolution piece of this, I'd like to take them as separate items. One, my support of the overall document is contingent on how we look at the questions that are submitted. So for me, and I wrote a statement, which I would love to be able to read at the appropriate point, I would urge us to look at the document as one thing, the questions as another, and then I do have some concerns and questions around some of the other be it resolved clauses.
Okay, so just, just for clarification purposes, this, item number four is going to be the question item. Right now, we're not there, so we're still just...
If I may?
Yeah.
I think it's a, it's a, it's a fair question.
Yep.
And just to understand that those whereas clauses can be considered by this body, and then Agenda Items 3 and 4 follow on the second page, and the first, now therefore be it resolved, would be the equivalent and is, in fact, Agenda Item Number 3. And the next, be it further resolved, is the Agenda Item Number 4, which would be the question. So if you want to make a motion to amend the whereas clauses to correct that typo, unless we get a legal ruling from counsel, that that's errata, which I believe it is.
So can you just clarify one more time? Are you saying we can break up the first series of whereases into one section, or separate each piece? What are you...
Well, I think that that's up to the board, whether you want to address each and every whereas, or would you, is it your druthers to just vote to adopt all those whereases and then get to what is Agenda Item Number 3?
Right, and to clarify, what is Agenda Item Number 3 again? The first, now there, be resolved?
Therefore, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, can I ask a question here?
Yes.
I'm interpreting, Nancy, please, did I go wrong?
Mm-hmm.
We can take the whereas clauses in their entirety and vote on the whereas, which is just a statement of record. We can do one vote on that. I think what I'm hearing is, take each of the individual resolved clauses independently. So if there's a concern with any one of the clauses itself, that you can vote against that or what have you, right, on each of the resolved clauses.
Right.
Right? Now, we did a very similar thing back in the day on the Board of Finance when it came to the annual budget, where we voted on the revenue side, we voted on each individual department side, and then we voted on the town budget as a whole. So if we want to do it like that, we can vote on the whereas clauses one, sorry, Brendan, I think you need to read that into the record, but we vote on the whereas clauses one, we take each of the resolved clauses independently. But then I think, this is just my own personal opinion, this is such an important document, I think we need to take one vote on the overall at the end of the resolved clauses. So do the whereas, do each of the individual resolved, and do a vote overall to send this on. That's what, that's, like I said, I'm just going by what we did when I was on the Board of Finance. There's nothing wrong if we did it that way, correct?
No, and it's up to the board and the chair to allow that to happen.
Right, just to clarify, though, for me, because I am not an attorney, and this is my first time doing this charter revision, if we, if any part of this gets rejected, correct, then does it nullify the document?
Fair question.
Does it trigger it going back to the CRC?
There's no triggering back to the CRC. The action you take tonight, which is approving or rejecting, ends the existence of the CRC. So the one you have to do first is approve the final report. You don't get to do your questions or anything else until you approve the report. That is the first action.
So let me just then follow up with Tom's point. So if we were to take all of these whereases as one item, yes or no vote, and somebody tell me I have to actually read this entire thing?
You can have a motion to waive the reading.
Okay. That's my favorite motion to make.
Thank you, I know, thank you. So then we would, then take, Tom, are you suggesting we would take up now therefore be resolved?
Correct. I think that's what Nancy's asking.
Each item separately.
Yeah, and then, but at the end, do an overall vote.
Then you're setting an overall vote on the entire matter.
Correct.
And I would only say, Tom, that that counters what I'm trying to accomplish. The whereas is an omnibus...
Yeah, I just think it's important.
But my concern is that, for instance, voting on the document is one thing, there are some be it resolved clauses that I don't support, and so I don't want to negate what comes before it or after it. If I have to, I would have to, but, you know, I really would like to be able to leave here with approval of a document that a lot of hard work has gone into.
I don't, but I don't know how you can have it both ways. Like, I don't, I think this resolved, and I'm not trying to be difficult, but it's kind of like when we voted on the, on the budget, that's what I equate it back for. You either vote for or against the individual provisions, but at the end of it, you either vote to move the budget forward or not. And I think that's, that's important for a document of this import to the town, I think. That's what I'm saying.
I'm only arguing to help if there is a legal way to allow us to be united in our approval of the document. I'm looking for it, but I wouldn't, there are two things that would prevent me, and that is approval of all these be it further resolved clauses, plus, and this is as a point of information and discussion, I would want to be able to know two things. One, that we were not doing this as a single up or down on the ballot, so in good faith, I would want to have that understanding, but also that we were going to delay whatever questions to a vote to a date certain, and I could live with Monday when we already have a scheduled meeting, so.
May I chime in and make a suggestion? I think that we ought to, you know, go with the flow here, and let's start with the low hanging fruit and talk about the whereas clauses, and then get to the next one and take it from there. And if there is a legal consequence to one of the last be it further resolved issues, we can, we can have that discussion, and we can have Attorney Mednick or myself give you an opinion as to whether that kills the whole thing or not. How's that?
Yeah, good for me? Fine. So we have a motion on the table, do I need to make a second motion to waive the reading of the whereas clauses, or change the errata?
If I never say that word. Can I, just, just, I might, just from my own edification, if we go through this to vote on these, and then we're going to go to the back, and just alluding to what you're saying, that potentially you don't like the date, or there's going to be, it appears to me there will be some issues with some of the be it resolves with the entire body unanimously. That's what I'm thinking. So does that then conflict with what?
If I may, or, may I, go ahead.
I just want to know the answer to that.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think we know until we get there. Perhaps there's an amendment to one of the be it further resolved, and, and we just need to get to that item before I can give you an opinion.
Do you want to make a motion to accept these whereases as a group?
Is that what to do, given that we have a motion on the table to accept, to move item 1? Is that what...
Yeah, I guess technically, the motion that was made should be withdrawn, and you should make a new motion to accept the whereas clauses.
Yeah, that's true.
In whole or in part.
You made a motion, you want to withdraw?
Sure.
And you want to withdraw?
I withdraw the second, and I'll make...
I think your motion would include, and we'll waive the reading and all of that, but then maybe you want to talk about the 2022 mistake?
Do you really, I understand it's a pain in the neck, do you really want to waive the reading on this, or just put it into the record and take the five minutes to read it?
Tom's volunteering.
I'll read it.
Okay.
You're up.
You want me to?
Yes.
I'll read it, make sure you get the 2022 in there.
So I first, should I first move to correct?
No, I think that's errata. That's not, that's not an issue.
So you're going to make a motion to approve the whereas section?
I move to approve the whereas section as an omnibus...
Of the resolution.
Of the resolution, or one clause of...
And I will second it.
And you want me to read it? Okay. Resolution of the Fairfield Board of Select Persons, actions on the final report of the Charter Revision Commission pursuant to CGS 7-191D. Whereas the commission conducted, 1, an organizational meeting on September 22nd, 2021; 2, its first statutory public hearing on October 6th, 2021, as required by CGS 7-191A; 3, 22 public hearings; and 4, a secondary statutory hearing on June 2nd, 2022; and, whereas, on June 13th, 2022, the commission completed its deliberations and voted to send a draft report, including the proposed revised town charter, to the Board of Select Persons' draft report. And whereas, on June 20th, 2022, the commission transmitted said draft report to the town clerk as required by CGS 7-191B. And, whereas, the Board of Select Persons engaged in public conferral meetings with the members of the commission, and on June 29th, 2022, conducted a public hearing on the draft report in accordance with CGS 7-19B, and considered and reviewed draft said report, or reviewed said draft report. And whereas, pursuant to CGS 7-191C, the Board of Select Persons, as the appointing authority of the charter revisions, was authorized to make recommendations to the commission for modifications of the draft report. And, whereas, the Board of Select Persons made 22 recommendations to the Charter Revision Commission, July 12th, 2022. And, whereas, on July 27th and July 28th, 2022, the Charter Revision Commission conferred with members of the Board of Select Persons pertaining to said recommendations in accordance with CGS 7-191C. And, whereas, on August 1st, 2022, following said conferral to the Charter Revision Commission, approved a final report accordance in, acting in accordance with many of the recommendations of said commission. And, whereas, the commission submitted its final report to the town clerk on August 5th, 22, 2022. And, whereas, the Board of Select Persons received said final report on August 5th, 2022, in accordance with CGS 7-191D. And, whereas, the Board of Select Persons is required to act upon the final report not later than 15 days after receiving the said final report.
Did you have to include this part?
No, I did it at the top. I did it at the beginning.
Okay.
So that's the whereas section.
Thank you.
True.
Motion to adopt that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the whereas section.
And I'll second it.
Is there any additional discussion on this item?
So just to be clear, to say it out loud, we have, per statute, 15 days from August 5th to respond, to vote up or down, and then we have to act on it, otherwise it goes away. Before approving, what then, can you talk about what then has to happen procedurally by state law, state statute?
You have to approve the final report.
Okay, and that, but the questions, that we don't need to have a stipulation about when the questions are due, is there...
Usually, no, well, you, no, the questions have to be submitted to the Secretary of State's office the first week in September, so as a rule, for example, Hartford tonight is approving the report and approving the questions, so you don't have multiple meetings on the same subject matter.
But, sorry, can you explain what the state statute requires in terms of, once we act on it, within that...
It requires you to approve the final report, and thereafter to adopt ballot questions. Doesn't have to be done the same night, if that's what you're asking.
It is, and how long do we have to submit those questions?
The practical answer to that, there's no, there's no specific answer. The practical answer is if you don't get your ballot questions in for the first week in September, then you will miss the election cycle. So whenever you get them in, you get them in, but the reality is, we're aiming for the first week in September.
So there's the practical, but if you could just explain for the record, so we are making informed decisions, understanding that we're all voting and acting with an assumption that we're getting on the 2022 ballot. I just want to understand, by statute, what is allowed to us?
I don't know what more you want me to say.
Yeah, you said by September.
By September, you have to get it in.
Is that what the law says, that that's what the statute...
Yes, if you do not get the ballots in by the first week in September, the Secretary of State cannot put it on the ballot for the November election, the ballot questions cannot put it on the ballot.
Okay, then I'm asking a second question, which is, let's just for, so we are having this fulsome discussion, so we know the full extent of what the law allows, so it is said out loud. What would happen if the date of the election were not an issue? What is allowed by statute in terms of the questions? Do we have to act within a certain amount of time?
There's no timeframe for acting on the ballot questions, except for the intent of the body to get the items on the ballot for November. So there's no timeframe. The timeframe is for accepting the report.
Okay.
And all the other stuff flows, that's why the ballot flows after approving the report.
Is there a time that this would all go away if it, again...
If you don't approve the report by the 20th of the month, then...
I'm saying, once we have that approved document, in terms of, is the life of the...
Then you can, then you can change the date. If you are not able to agree on ballot questions in time to get it on the ballot for this November, you can change the date that you want to put it on the ballot, as long as it's within a certain timeframe. You could have a special election, you might be able to actually put it on the following year election, but if you're aiming for this election, it necessitates getting it done for the first week in September.
Understood. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, any additional questions on this item?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so Attorney Baldwin, Attorney Mednick, do you recommend we, what's your recommendation on how we handle the, be it their...
The next paragraph.
I believe that the motion should be made based on the next paragraph, the first, now therefore be resolved.
Each one, each one, or as a whole?
No, just that, that one, two-line sentence, the first, now be it...
Go ahead, Tom, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we adopt the language that starts, now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Select Persons approves the final report of the Charter Revision Commission dated August 1st, 2022, in its entirety.
I'll second. I'll open it up to the board for discussion.
I have a couple of questions.
Proceed.
Thank you. Submission and effective date, is that something that, if we move to strike it, one, are we allowed to do that, since we didn't have the CRC look at it? Is it...
This doesn't, this, this paragraph doesn't represent that, though. There's no...
The, sorry, the, I'm talking about what's in now, because now we're up for, what's up for discussion is the charter itself.
No, okay, so, I'm sorry, just be, we're talking about, I want to make sure that we're on the same page, that's why I'm doing this, Nancy. We're talking about the first sentence on the second page, which is now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Select Persons approves the final report of the Charter Revision Commission dated August 1st, 2022, in its entirety. Is that what you're referencing?
Isn't that the charter, that we're voting?
She's talking about language in the charter.
Got it, okay, I just, because I was trying to follow what you were talking in here, go ahead.
Right, so now we're talking about the meat of this document, right?
The report, yeah.
Well, the report, everything we sent them over numerous meetings, and everything they sent us back.
So that's what I'm asking, as a...
You can delete that, you can delete that provision from the charter, if you'd like. If you do, then the statute takes over, and the charter would become effective within 30 days after approval, under Section 7-191F, the general statute. So you can delete that, that's a rejection in part of the final report of the Charter Commission, but there's a statutory protection that would allow for the report to go into effect within 30 days.
So therefore, I'm going to make a motion, a motion to strike that paragraph from the final report. So would the chairman just please, for a matter of process, call for a second, even if there isn't one?
Yeah, I'll second for purposes of discussion.
I just meant even to call if there is a second.
She's second.
Purposes of discussion.
Okay, so I just, as you said, statute takes over, thank you, statute takes over, so to me, it seems on... Statute takes over, so, um, to me, it seems unnecessary, there's been a lot of question raised, I don't think that the it reflects, um, that the Board of Select Persons as a body had, uh, authority over the timing, and I just think that since statute takes over, it's unnecessary here. So, um, that's why I'm moving to strike it. I don't have anything further to add.
So can you elaborate, though? Why don't you want it in?
Because there was so much discussion around process and timing that I don't think it needs to be codified in the charter that, because the statute does take over, so, um, it's really not more than that.
I, I'm confused, because I don't think it says, I mean, it just says we're approving the final report of the Charter Revision Commission that it's dated August first in its entirety, I'm, I'm missing, am I missing something?
Well, in, she's going to the body, if, uh, she's going to the body of the charter itself to reject from the final report, section ten point five. And the way section ten point five works right now is that the effective date would be November twenty, uh, seven, two thousand and twenty-two. There are provisions in there that, for example, for the Board of Education elections, um, that are dated. And I'm wondering if she is suggesting that we should have no date for the change of the Board of Education election, that's, because that's the reason you try, try to deal with it within the body of the document, because there's some timing issues that are relevant.
Okay, so can you, sorry, can you explain that implication?
I'll get another version of my treffer.
About she, I think you meant, me.
Yes, I was talking to you.
Thank you.
The, um...
I don't, I don't understand, Mike.
So, so we have?
If you can explain the implication, if it's something broader than what I'm, and I'm not understanding it, I may move to, um, strike the motion, I just?
Here's, here's how I read.
So, so.
Attorney Metnick, here's how I read it. This calls for it to be effective November twenty-seventh, right? Which if you said, hey, you could remove it, but it becomes, if it gets approved, in either case, it either becomes effective November twenty-seventh, or it becomes effective December ninth. Is that correct? Because it's thirty days after it gets approved by the electorate, right?
Except for you think it's somehow, um...
That's what I, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Language on the dates of the board?
Yeah, that's the difference, actually, it's okay, actually, because the way the statute reads is if there are, uh, alternative effective dates or dates specified therein. So the internal dates still work, the difference would be thirty days versus forty-five, whatever the timeframe is, it would be, yeah.
It's basically a week difference.
Yeah, there's a week difference, so it's, uh, you know, not a, not a big issue.
November twenty-seventh versus December ninth. At, at least according to what you just described, that's the catch-up.
It, no, it isn't, I mean, as I said, it was, um, I wanted to understand the implications. To me, as I said, there was a lot of, uh, language and discussion around dates and timing and whatnot, so to me, I didn't think it, because there is statute, it seemed.
And by the way, this is going to come back up in the third, be it further resolved.
So does it, I mean, I, I personally don't think it makes a difference either way, I think it's, it's not, it doesn't matter. It's a week or, it's a tw, and it's already in here, and then we're going to have to make an amendment and changes to the other areas. I mean, is it really very important?
I'll, I'll keep my motion on the table, but understand that it doesn't have support.
Okay. I mean, I don't. All right, so we have a, we have a motion and a second on the floor, I'm just going to call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye. Motion failed.
I do have a couple of other amendments, and then a point of information which maybe we could tackle first.
So wait just one minute, are we going to, um, are we going to go to the next be it resolved?
You're still on the first one.
Oh, you have an amendment to this, okay.
One thing I wanted to say, it was brought to my attention, some, an errata that as, wasn't fixed, um, four, three, and I think it, it was, it is errata, so it may not four, three, C, but it wasn't fixed in four, three, B, seven, it should be changed to read the first, uh, select person shall, and this goes back to some language that was shared in writing from Bill Gerber. The first select person shall select, appoint, and hire appointed town officers as provided for in this charter by ordinance or by the state statutes. It was fixed in, uh, four, three C, one, but not at four, three, B, seven.
It, it was fixed in the other, there was no need to fix it here, the, the first select person does have, um, where they have authority, how could they not appoint?
I'm not looking at it.
In accordance with the charter or the general statutes, I don't think seven was an errata change. We did accept the C, one, because that clearly was, um, appropriate. But I didn't see what the errata was, um, in, um, subsection seven.
Was this in regards to the email that Bill, that Attorney Baldwin applied to him, and about, I thought he was pretty clear, um, responding to him that the?
I haven't gotten, I may not.
This was earlier, I think it was this morning, or early this morning.
Yeah, I, I concur with Attorney Metnick, um, subsection seven, just above that, in, in section B, is perfectly appropriate as it's presented in this latest document. It reads, select, uh, select, appoint, and hire appointed town officers, including department heads, except as otherwise provided for in this charter or by the general statutes. That's perfectly consistent with.
Okay, I, and maybe, if it's not in the charter, the default is not to the first selectman, however.
That's correct, that, that, that has been corrected.
Okay.
As Attorney Metnick mentioned.
Okay. I'd like to move to, and I have to, to strike, um...
Do you have any more amendments on this part? This one item that we just, we still have a motion?
That's what I'm doing.
Okay.
And maybe Attorney Metnick, you can help me find, I folded it down, but now it's on.
You'd have to let me know, give me a hint.
I'd like to move to strike, um, the, this chief of staff and chief administrative officer as a town officer and all that, or remove it from being codified here, so wherever the, I don't know how to make that motion into, because I don't know where it's, it's like all it's, that's implicated, implied as a result.
In section four point three, E, is, the chief of staff is within the, uh, that section, and F is the chief administrative officer, you want to delete them from the charter?
I would, I would, uh, vote to remove them from the charter, those two positions.
So it would be for Madam, uh, Madam, uh, first lookers, and it would be section four point three, E, that's in, that's all the staff. You want to eliminate all the staff or just the chief of staff?
Um, sorry, please tell me the section.
Subsection E of section four point three. First select person is entitled to appoint a chief of staff and administrative assistant or equivalent positions. All assistants and staffs appointed by the first select person shall serve at the pleasure of the first select person, and E, then F is the CAO, the chief administrative officer.
Correct. So yes, to remove. To remove those two sections, and if someone could help me?
So is, I, I'm just going to say before, um, there won't be, we, there wouldn't be a discussion on this item, which was discussed for a really long time, if there's not a second. Is there a second on this item?
No, I have a process question.
Go ahead, ahead.
I'm getting, and I'm confused, and I'm not trying to shut anything down. So we went through the charter recommendations that came from the Charter Revision Commission. We voted yea or nay on those, the nay being to send some back to the Commission. This was one of the items, was the chief administrative officer. We voted on that, we voted, I think it was two to one. Sent it back for them to revise some language, they revised the language. It's back before us, is this the appropriate, are, are we doing this right, to bring this back up again?
I, I believe that, uh, you can, uh, accept a re, you could reject in part, so I think, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, select woman Lefkowitz can make this motion to eliminate?
It's a valid, it is a valid motion.
I didn't know.
It's a rejection in part.
It's been discussed before by your board, but this is the final ash.
It's a final report.
Whether it was, and this was my point.
Yeah.
I didn't know whether it was, um, limited to a rejection of the revised language, do you see what I'm saying, like, a, a more narrow interpretation of the revised?
As a rule, that's what occurs in most legislative bodies, they narrow it down from time to time, but it's, um, but that's just a practice that most use, it is, um,
Okay.
because you've already debated the item.
That's, that's right.
But you're still entitled to, since it's in the final report, you're still entitled to go over the waters you've traveled over before.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
It was always intimated to me in meetings, um, both around this table and with Attorney Baldwin, that it was, there was always going to be this opportunity.
That's fine.
So, um, oftentimes, as the minority member, these discussions and these motions are my only opportunity to, to raise my objections and have a voice. So, um, I have not been shy about.
Oh, I have no problem with that. I just didn't know whether we could go back to whether it should be in the charter or not, which we voted on, or whether we needed to stay within the confines of, they added new language, right, is the new language appropriate or not? That's really, it was procedural.
Okay.
Right, no, I get it.
Okay, is there a second on this, uh, motion?
No.
Okay.
Seeing none.
I do have a point of information question, and then those are, it were for my amendments. To me, I'd like to understand the intention of, um, of this body to understand. Sorry. To me, contingent on my ability, as I have mentioned, contingent on my ability to support the document, is to understand if the intention of this body is to have a single up or down vote on the ballot, or if, if we really do intend to, um, parse out some questions of the more contested, controversial, pertinent issues. So I'd like to understand that before I could in?
I can answer your, I can answer your question, that, that is going to be the next agenda item and motion presented, and it's not germane to this agenda item, which has been moved, and which is a subject to discussion. You're now merging two different agenda items, and I don't think it's appropriate.
Okay, so I guess what I would do then, if you could help me as our counsel, figure out the best way so that I can make a more informed decision about the overall document. What is available to me in the context of this, whether it's, um, tabling this motion or merging the two items for discussion purposes?
As Attorney Metnick explained, you don't get to the second agenda item, uh, regarding the question to be presented to the voters unless and until you act upon the one that is now before you.
So in good faith, what I'm asking is, is there a way to understand, um, what the intention is? Because as I said, contingent and important to my ability to vote for the document is understanding whether or not we will be presenting it as a, as multiple questions, so, um...
That's, that's, I, I, I can't answer that question from a legal perspective. The, the item is before you, and the item that is not before you is the question, because it can't be unless and until you approve this item. So I, I think I understand what you're looking for, but I'm not able to give it to you, uh, from a legal perspective.
And procedurally, and perhaps it's worth pausing so that we can have, we can find out this answer, because you're saying you don't know.
You haven't debated the question that comes up next, so that's subject to deliberation and debate and discussion by this body. That hasn't happened yet. And, and, and it, it may or may not happen, depending on, on how you vote on this item. So you're, you're putting the proverbial cart before the horse.
And I'm suggesting that one very much informs my ability to vote for another, out of respect for what I think the public deserves and demands. And so I am asking if there is a process, and I understand that item is not before us. So I'm asking, is there a process that would allow us to take up the next item so that we can make a more informed decision? Because I really would like to be able to support the document, but I cannot if I don't know the answer, which I think is so germane to being able to have an informed vote here. So if we need to take five minutes, I'm happy to do it.
I, I, you're, it's a very narrow question on a very large document that has had a lot of work put into it. And, uh, it's got a lot of support, I believe, from most people in this room, including yourself, as I understand it, and you've alluded to that. It, it is the exercise and the responsibility of this body to consider that document objectively and to opine and ultimately vote on whether or not you think it is appropriate. It is then, and only then, that you get to the next question, I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself, but I think the answer is, no, you can't put the cart before the horse.
So what I hear you saying, Attorney Baldwin, is we are still on the item of this, the, this, this document, we're, Nancy, we are literally voting on each of these as a standalone, as, um, the, the body of the work. Language regarding questions is the next item, it's not this item. One isn't, you, you, so for example, what I'm hearing you say is that you need to know something
That hasn't been debated or discussed or deliberated yet.
If you agree with the charter language that we've been working on for a very long time. So they're separate from what I'm hearing Attorney Baldwin say, and I believe he's, I agree with him, they are separate. We're right now discussing, our board is discussing and debating the actual language that we sent to the CRC, that they sent to us, that we sent back, that they sent back, and now we're talking about that, the, the, that, the the substantive language. The next item, when we're done voting on that, would be what, how do we derive a question or questions that reflect what we voted on? So we have to actually vote on it first to be able to decipher what the question's supposed to be like.
Respectfully, I understood it when Attorney Baldwin explained it.
Okay.
I understand as you are explaining it now, and I'm simply suggesting that for me, to make an informed decision about voting on the document itself is contingent on my understanding of how it will be presented to the public, because I believe that there are things in it that the public deserves to weigh in on. And so, therefore, if it's going to be a simple up or down vote, it wouldn't be my inclination to support the document.
So there's things within the document that you don't agree with, that you won't support, so you're, you're basically, I, I understand where you're going, but I?
I'm sup, what I'm supporting is allowing the public to decide on some very salient things that have been?
But the public has put it in our laps to decide first. So we need to, by, by our role here, we need to take a, an up or down vote, that's what we get after amendments, right? As to whether we accept the report, which is completely separate and discreet from how it gets represented on the ballot, I understand. But I'm saying, you're, you're making one contingent on the other.
Correct.
So you're saying, I'm not going to support the report.
Because I think the public does, to your point, have the right on, on issues that have become so, it's clear to us what some of those issues are, and we can debate whether it's?
I'm sorry, but I, I, I think this is discussion now about the second, about the second, the next agenda item, and that's not before you, so I, I understand your process.
I'm respectfully going to ask that we take five minutes, because I'd like some time to think about, about this, I need to take some time, so, uh, respectfully, I'm asking for a five-minute break.
Of course.
Sure.
Can I get a motion to take a five-minute break?
So moved.
Second, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're, what is that, uh, the recording?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, we're back, um, I need a motion to come, to come out of the break, five-minute break.
So moved.
Oh, okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can everyone please mute their, um, uh, WebExs or telephones while we are having the meeting, and then when we open it up for public comment?
and then when we open it up for public comment? Thank you. Okay, we're back. So where we left off was that we had a procedural question on the table regarding, talking about item number, I think it's four, prior to item number three. I think that question has been asked and answered, so I'm going to ask that the board move on with any additional amendments.
So I did have a chance, and I took a break to understand, so I could better understand Roberts' rules. It's my understanding that we do have the ability, I could make a motion to table this motion, so that we could get a sense of the body for the next motion. So there is that afforded to me as, you know, procedurally. So to say there is no process in place is, is not accurate unless I really am not interpreting Roberts' rules correctly, or my understanding of what's been told to me. So am I correct, attorneys?
You'd have to give me the section of Roberts' rules.
I, I don't.
Well, then, I can't help you.
I think that the board can do most anything it wants to with permission or agreement by the chair, but I think it's highly unusual, especially in a circumstance like this, where this is a charter approval process, and putting the cart before the horse, as I said.
So I think what you're saying.
I would have to, I would have to look into it, but I don't, I don't know the technical answer to the question. I suppose you might be able to do that and then get a sense of the body, but I think you would have to have agreement by the other parties to do that, the other members.
So then I would make a motion to table this discussion.
So before, okay, so before you make your motion, I'm just going to say that I think it's important for us to discuss the body of the document. I do, I genuinely do, and I'm not trying to sideline, I'm not. I think we should, it's important that we talk about the body of the document and vote on that, and then go to the question. That's what I've been advised over the course of this charter thing for the past year, that this is what other towns do. I understand what you're saying, you want to take motion, an item out of order. That's typically a normal thing you can do, if somebody's waiting, or an appointment, or somebody wants, has to go. But I think it's very important for us to be on the record, each of us as elected officials who have been engaged in this process for a year, to weigh in on the, on the content, not how it may be parsed out later, but actually on the real content of what has happened in this charter. So I'm not in favor of taking anything on the border. So your motion is here, and I'll ask if there's a second for that. Hearing none. So we're back to the item, and I'm going to ask the board if there's any additional amendments to the item.
Which is the body of the report that was reported back to us?
Correct.
Yep.
I would offer for the record, I think that we do a disservice in not allowing for that fulsome discussion, but I stand, I stand firm in, in my position.
Yeah, I, I want to address that just for a second. One is, can, one is contingent upon the other. It's irrelevant to have a question to, to take up the, the second one first. The first one is our obligation as elected officials to vote on a document that we've been intimately involved with, and, and have the appropriate discussion over amending that document for things that we agree or disagree with. So I think that it's important to go on the record, the three of us as the executive branch of the government, as to whether we support the document or not, and then we can have the discussion. It's absolutely appropriate to have the discussion as to how that gets put before the electorate. But I just see them as two separate issues, and by the way, if we don't approve the document, then how it goes before the, the town is, is irrelevant, because it doesn't, it stops there. So another, you know, this one either happens, or it doesn't, and, and then we can discuss the other items. So I'd rather review the document on its merits, based on all the hard work that the nine board members did, and that we did collectively, and that townspeople have weighed in on through many hours of conversations, both with the town attorney, with Attorney Menick, as well as with members of our body. So that's what I would say. And that's why I didn't support the motion.
And I, I appreciate what you're saying, Tom. I would just counter with, if we have nothing to hide, and we are being wholly transparent, then I don't think it should matter where we are with the questions, and to understand, because for this select person, it, it is contingent on understanding how we break it out, because the public has been so engaged. We are going to disagree, and I'm clearly not going to get you to agree. So I, I would just argue that, to me, it is not something you can.
But I don't know, I don't know what gets hidden when you say, it's a vote on the document, period. As three elected officials, we should vote on the document and the provisions of the document, regardless of how it gets sent before the town, because that's a separate question. It's, do you agree with the provisions of the document, or no? It's that simple. After that, then it turns over to then our obligation to craft the question, and it's absolutely legitimate to say, I want to have this broken out, or this broken out. That, that's a valid discussion point. But I think it's hiding worse to actually say, I don't know whether I approve the document, because I don't know whether I can pass it along to the voters individually. No. Approve the document or not, that's what we were elected to do. How it gets presented to the voters, a valid but separate discussion, and only happens if we approve the document. That's, that's where I'm coming from.
And, and, and it, I think is a question here of philosophy. Philosophically, to me, making that decision has to be informed by the questions that we're going to ask. We don't agree.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
So it's, it's about having all the information available to us, and this, to me, is a missing piece of information.
Okay, so I want to bring the board back to focus on, we have two items on our agenda, and we are already at 5:30. We started at four, and we're not even through the first. So I would like us to just please get focused on this document, on this piece. Are there any amendments from the body on the item that we're currently on?
Which is the report itself.
Correct.
I, can I, I very much, I just, I don't want to make this a love fest, but I do want to express my appreciation to the, to your committee, Mr. Chairman, for the three meetings that happened after our discussions at the Board of Selectmen. I thought you guys were, were open and honest, and I know it was very difficult for some of your members, who felt very passionately about certain provisions, and I thought that in a, in a very professional manner, from that perspective. And I thought there was a lot of collaboration on a bipartisan basis to really even adjust some of the things Ms. Lefkowitz had indicated she thought was controversial. And I thought that, coming out of that, we had reached a consensus that those controversial things had been addressed, and that we were in a good place. And I give all the members, the Democrats, the Republicans, and the independents, kudos for that work. And I thought you took the spirit of the commentary that came back from this body very well. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. So do we have any additional amendments on this item from the body?
I don't have any additional amendments. I think rushing, and I'm going to call taking a, a vote today without the robust knowledge of where the questions might go, is doing the public a disservice, but we, we will agree to disagree here.
So I, I will say that I actually really disagree. This process has been literally, and I've said this before, the most transparent charter reform process, revision process, in the history, in the history of the Town of Fairfield. Literally, literally. And the, the Board of Selectmen, the Charter Revision Commission members, as Attorney Menick referenced earlier, allowed for more public comment than was statutorily required. The body received emails. The Board of Selectmen received emails. We had extraordinarily long Board of Selectmen meetings, working on sending resolutions back to the Board of, the Charter Revision Commission. They were long, and there were many of them. We had public input at those meetings. We sent back a list of resolutions to them. They reviewed them. We were all part of it. This body of elected officials were part of that process. The public weighed in with them. They sent these back, based on our conversations, our interaction, they didn't have a closed meeting, the three elected officials who are the ones who are responsible for voting on the items to send to a ballot for the public to have an opportunity to vote on. We were engaged in that whole process, talking, listening, inputting, all of it. Now it's back. This is just on all of that work. That's all this is. How the questions are parsed out is a totally different situation. So I don't feel the public has been deprived of any opportunity throughout this entire process. Actually, completely the opposite. They have been more than allowed, more open to, to share everything. Oh my God, up until the last minute, we're taking a raw data information. Everybody's very fluid here. There's nothing hidden. So I, I just think that's a really, really unfair statement to a process where a lot of people did a lot of hard work, and there was a lot of compromise and a lot of review. So I'm going to have to say that I don't think that's appropriate comment, and I'm going to now, if there is no further.
Respectfully, I would say that transparency absolutely needs to include what the public vote will be, and what they're voting on.
And that's, item number four is that item, and we will have that discussion then. And ultimately, the voters of Fairfield will have an opportunity to vote on questions, or question, or whatever regarding the charter. So if we, there's no additional amendments on this item, if there is none, or do you have any, Mr. Flynn?
I do not.
Okay, so I am going to ask for a vote to approve. We have a motion, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries two to one. Now which item is next?
So the way we're doing this.
Right.
Jim, do, are we still on, how should we go about the rest of these items? I know we want, Nancy's asked to vote on them individually.
I would, I would suggest that you take the next agenda item.
Okay.
Which would be the equivalent of be it further resolved.
Got it.
Which is the question to be presented to the voters.
So is, is it this here?
The, the, be it further resolved above that, and then, and then, and then there's a proposal to be read, yes.
Those questions.
Opened up to the.
The whole entire thing? Point of information, may I make a res, uh, may I make a motion at this point to change this from here, consider and act, to here and consider?
I, I think that, you, you can make whatever motion you want. There is no motion right now before the body. There's a draft.
I haven't read it.
Motion that's presented to you, but somebody's got to make a motion for there to be discussion, and it needs to be seconded.
Per the agenda, it's to hear, consider, and act if we're on item number four.
We're not on four, we're still on.
Yes, yes you are.
Well, we're, but we haven't moved it yet.
Right.
We haven't moved it yet.
So that's my question, as a point of information, if, if I want to move, if I don't want to act on it, and I want to make a motion to hear and consider, and move the action piece, is that come after the motion's been made for agenda item four?
It's an agenda item. It's not the actual motion, per se. The motion, per se, needs to be made by somebody, and the suggestion is that that motion would be what is in the next be it further resolved section of, of what's before you.
So I'm asking, as a point of information, if I need to repeat my question, I'm asking as a point of information, I see what is on the next, what is up for discussion as the next agenda item.
You're, you're moving to, you're moving to amend the agenda, is what your motion is. You're making a motion to amend the agenda.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking.
That's what you're asking, okay.
What's a special meeting?
But it's a special meeting.
But which I understand with two-thirds, like, if I had two-thirds majority?
You can't amend a special meeting agenda under FLOI, I believe.
Yeah, that's true.
Even without two-thirds majority? My understanding is that you could with two-thirds majority.
I don't know if a special meeting, though.
I believe it's for a regular meeting.
Regular meeting, sure.
I don't think a special meeting. And you can't add items to a special meeting.
So again, as a point of information, seeing how it is here as a item to be acted on, is there no procedural way to, by motion or what have you, to move acting on this agenda item?
You could move to table it. You could reject it as a body, you know, the substance of it. You can do both those things.
And so by tabling, but I, if I wanted to make, somehow make that motion to hear and consider, I don't want to table the entire item? Is that something that's possible?
I, you, you're asking whether you can amend the agenda, and the answer is no. So I believe that the answer is no, you can't change the agenda for whether you act on it or not. You could have it continued or tabled to a date certain, or you could have it tabled for a few hours or what have you, but no.
And does that have, that tabling to a date certain have to happen by official motion, or is that as a course of conversation and agreement?
It's a motion to table it.
But, okay, so I'm, this part I don't understand. I'd like to be able to make a motion that would allow us to hear and consider, but not take it up as an action item. So I'm asking for your input on best language, as I am not a lawyer, so that I could make that motion to see if it would be considered.
The way I understood it, from my past experience, because this is a special meeting, we can't edit the language, so you have to reject it in its entirety by either A, just rejecting it flat out, or B, tabling it, at which point, at either point, we're done tonight, and it has to be reposted and come back. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't know if you're talking about the actual motion that's not yet on the table, but the one that's, that's about to be, possibly, or whether you're talking about the agenda itself.
The agenda, what I'm saying is, I understand what Nancy's trying to do. She wants to hear the item tonight, but not be required to vote on the item tonight, act on the item tonight.
Right.
My understanding has always been on a special meeting. We can't do that unless it gets taped, or it gets rejected out.
What I'm asking is, how do we do that? How do I do that?
Okay, I, I, I think I understand. I think, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, you could make the motion first, so that it's subject to discussion, which would be deliberation, consideration, call it what you, what you will, and then somewhere along the lines, before you put it to a vote, there would be a motion to table. Is that fair enough, Steve? Are you good with that?
I'm not sure I understand.
Frankly, I'm just not sure I understand what she's trying to accomplish.
I think that would accomplish your, your, your goal here.
Thank you. So take up the agenda item, as we would, and then move at some point, if I so am compelled.
Which has happened on several occasions with this board.
I wanted to be clear, it is a special meeting, so I wanted to understand what was available to me. Thank you.
So I guess I'll put forth the motion to hear, consider, and act upon the question to appear in the November 8th, 2022 Town of Fairfield voting ballot. I'll make the motion to put it before us.
I'll second it.
Okay.
That should be the motion.
Motion is.
Well, I'll go that, and then I'll say, then the rest of this is really the motion. I'm here on.
This, this should be read as well, in my opinion. Be a, make a motion that the Board of Select Persons.
Okay, Tom, you're up.
Yeah, so be it further resolved that the Board of Select Persons, in accordance with CGS 7-191 and F, hereby adopts the following question to be placed on the ballot for a referendum to be held on the general election of November 8th, 2022. Should I read the rest, or stop? rest or stop there?
The rest is part of it.
Okay.
Yeah, if this is your motion, this is your language, right?
Well, this is language that was in here, yes. Shall the Town of Fairfield Charter be reorganized to A, make it easier to use and understand, B, modernize language and references throughout, C, update and expand definitions, and D, make substantive changes including but not limited to the following. One, uniform standards of conduct, civility and operations. Two, streamline budget and contract approval procedures. Three, allow for greater competition in Board of Education elections. Four, modify Board of Select Person vacancy process. Five, codify the 40-member RT, the current 40-member RTM with 10 districts. Six, appointment of constables. Seven, codify the positions of Town Administrator and Chief of Staff. Eight, modify residency and qualification standards for certain department heads. Nine, update the Board of Library trustee responsibilities. And 10, amend the process for updating the town seal. That's the motion that's before us as part of this.
We have a motion and a second, so.
Well, somebody has to second it because I finished reading it, so I think.
Well, we did have a motion and a second, but you read it.
Yeah.
Make a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you, I'm sorry, do you have a copy of that language?
Yeah, it's, it's in the resolution.
That's what you have right there, that one pager that's on both sides. That's the one we've been working off of.
I haven't, I just didn't see it in front of me.
That's fine. There's a lot of paper floating around.
For the record, when was this one forwarded? This, because this is a revision from what I have.
I don't know. It was posted.
I don't think it was posted. I think it was, it was finalized this afternoon and put on the table for distribution before the meeting.
Okay, yes.
I don't know when that happened.
Because I know that Attorney Baldwin, Ann Mednick, had reached out to us, the Board separately with, what do you call, sample ballot questions from other towns and such, and then asked for our feedback about what we thought. And I know Tom and I had some discussions about what we thought, and we gave our feedback to Attorney Baldwin about what we thought it should say, how it should sort of encapsulate everything that's in the charter, or the, the most notable changes. And I guess he put, yeah, together.
So just for the record, I just want to state that this is the first time I'm seeing this language. So I haven't had a chance to, and hearing it is the first time I'm, as Mr. Flynn just read it, it's the first time I'm, I'm hearing it. When Mr. Baldwin and I had a brief conversation yesterday in advance of the meeting, I felt, given the tone of the conversation, it would probably be more prudent to have a discussion, a fulsome discussion around this table. It's my hope that I'm going to move to table the vote to a date certain, to give us all a chance to reflect on this language. So that's what I want to say for the record. I'm really not in a position to comment on this now because I, I mean, I'm happy to talk about it, but certainly in terms of the expectation of a vote, I don't think it would be appropriate, seeing how I'm just seeing it now.
So I would say that I, well, obviously, we, we knew we had to formulate questions. We've been asked by the attorneys to give information based on some sample balloting. Do you have any, did you give Attorney Baldwin any language that you?
No, my hope was that, no, my hope was that we, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. My hope was that we would be able to discuss those items here and have that robust discussion. Again, it would be my hope, in the spirit of public engagement, transparency, which is an ethos that's been espoused throughout this process, to, to lay them out on the table, to talk about, you know, there have been about six issues that, of import to the public that we keep hearing about, and I'm happy to, to list those issues based on what I think would be important as questions to be parsed out. So no, the short answer to your question is I didn't, but my hope was that we would discuss them here.
Well, absolutely. I think we, we always intended to discuss them in public, but similar to your meetings that you had with Attorney Baldwin, and I believe with Mr. Scheinberg and RTM member Jill Vergara going through the charter, you know, to prepare to be able to send resolutions to the Charter Revision Commission, we were asked to provide some feedback, what we thought, and that's what I, Tom and I did. And I just assumed you would as well give it to the attorneys. They would compile it, and then we would have a draft here so that we could have a discussion based on that homework, so to speak, of, you know, what, where we think the questions should be based on the sample balloting we got from the attorneys, what other towns do, things of that nature. I mean, obviously, you know, people do work behind, you know, outside of the meetings. You had meetings at your home with Attorney Baldwin and...
12 hours of them.
Right. So again, the public wasn't invited to those meetings, but that was substantive meetings that you had chance to do work at. And so we were asked by the attorneys to submit some of our ideas so they could have something to, to go on, so we could have a conversation here, a productive one.
So again, for the record, I'll respond to that. The 12 hours plus meetings that, Ms. Vergara, Mr. Scheinberg and I had with Attorney Baldwin over the course of a couple of days was really a forensic deep dive because it was such a confusing document and keeping track and looking at errata, and the hours and hours we spent around this table really was a substantive review of those errata and findings and the constant questioning. And I know that was challenging, certainly for Mr. Mednick to hear, as evident by some of the response you had to my, my, what seemed like frustrating line of questioning and evaluating and, and again, so to me, I would have been happy to have 12 hours of a forensic deep dive, but I think what we did do is bring the summary of those findings to the table. So...
Correct. So I think this is similar. So I, I assume, Nancy, that you may have gave the attorney some language. They put a draft together based on all of our input. I assumed you gave some.
Yeah.
And that's why I thought we, you know, obviously, this is a, I mean, this is a public meeting, but we have to have something to discuss. We can't just have nothing.
Right. Again, exactly the reasoning, what you're saying exactly, is why I would hope that we would talk about what those issues are here.
So do you want to comment on this, on what's?
What I, I would love to be able to finish my thought here, which is, my, my hope would be, what I think would be fair and what the public deserves after this very long process and thoughtful process, and is to take into account the issues of import to the public, talk about them here. I think the appropriate timing on the draft writing would be after this meeting, after we've had a chance to publicly talk about what those issues might be, go away, create some draft language, and then come to the table on Monday. And or, you know, again, that's perhaps Monday where we have a Board of Selectment meeting. So to me, it's, it's cart before the horse.
So my response to you would be that developing the questions for, for the residents of our town to vote on is based on information in the charter, the revised charter language. It's not up for speculation. It's, it's not, it's just, you know, what it is. And so frankly, I mean, I've been in elected office a long time. I have written policy at a Board of Ed table. I have done a lot of things. I have written language in the state legislature. So I don't, I never thought that we were going to wait or need to deliberate questions based on what's already been decided over a year process of what's in the charter. It's just how do we decipher it to the public so they have an understanding? Obviously, it's going to be backed up by lots of good information to the community. I have included the charter information in almost 30 newsletters. We can send out newsletters. We can send a mailing to, for, so people can click on the link to understand what's in it. There's tons of ways, and I have a list of things I wanted to share with the Board if we got to that point, to make sure that our community is engaged and understands it. I mean, even the fact that we sent out so many newsletters and we had articles about it, and it was on Fair TV and all of this. If you think about it, I think like less than 100 people wrote to the CRC or Board of Selectment about the charter. So I, I thought we would come here, do the hard work, roll up our sleeves, decide on the language of this. I asked, specifically asked you and Tom, when were you available? I actually adjusted my schedule today to make sure I could be here at this meeting, and he, and Tom did as well. There's a lot of schedules here. The, some, some attorneys may not be around next week. We assume to be here to vote, to debate, to discuss, to write language, to roll up our sleeves, and then produce a, produce a question or questions for the, for the ballot.
If I might, just on, on that, here's my understanding of how this played out from my perspective, right? We engaged in the conversation and the back and forth with the CRC that I alluded to before. We came to an agreement on the things that were quote unquote contentious. We came to some compromise on some of those things. We took some things out. We agreed that in general, we were quite happy with the charter, and though not everybody, I think, got everything they wanted, everybody agreed that the document was a good, solid step forward, and the more controversial items in the document were removed at that point in time. Doesn't mean we always agreed, but it meant that those items were removed. That was number one. Then number two, I got a reach out from the First Selectwoman mid-last week or so, I don't remember the exact timing, saying, what's your calendar this week, so that we can get together and have the vote, because the attorneys are anxious to get going on this, given vacation schedules, given, meeting schedules, given the deadline of September 1st. And at that time, Brenda, First Selectwoman, reached out and said, Tom, what's your schedule? And those same conversations, I think, happened with Nancy. We came to a conclusion, and it was explained to me, and I can only speak for myself, that we would be expected to come today and be able to vote on the item. At that time, Brenda had tipped off to me that the lawyers would be reaching out to have conversations relative to formulating the question and getting our thoughts, much like they had done previously on some of the charter stuff early on in the process. Attorney Baldwin reached out to me, and we had a significant conversation over a couple of items. Number one, how, how do we go about formulating the questions? What are examples of those questions and things like that? What do other towns do? Number two, what were some of the stats regarding those towns, and whether they had multiple questions, whether they had, had one question on the item? How was that handled? Number three, how would we go about breaking out the questions? How would it look on the ballot? And number four, what was the language that wouldn't, wouldn't unintentionally steer the, the public one way or the other? I followed that up with a conversation with, with the First Selectwoman, knowing that because it's going on the ballot and because there's a limited amount of space, that it was really going to be a summary document or a summary item, and that in order to vote on it more, more well-informed, there needed to be a communication strategy, which I'd like to hear a little bit more about today. But what I basically said was, what I was interested in is how do we make this readable, understandable, and fair within the ballot for the people? And how do we make sure they're well-informed? Now, that's knowing that there were 22 separate meetings that were all televised. There were, I think, two or three, there are three deliberations by us before the CRC. There was the meeting with us in the CRC. There were multiple conversations and public comment within the CRC, and then within the Board of Selectment, and Attorney Mednick had actually mentioned to me privately that actually that, that was something that he hadn't seen before, the amount of engagement, and I think you were surprised by that. At least, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I believe that's what you told me.
I was pleased.
Yeah. And that that actually brought us to the fact that it was our responsibility. They actually put these questions together and discussed them at this meeting, knowing that there could be areas of disagreement and/or we could come up with better phrasing that all of us were comfortable with, so that we could get it approved and then move forward on the ballot. So I'm ready to have the discussion about the items because that's everything that was really told to me in the course of the last 14 months, or rather 12 months, whatever, whatever we are. I'm bad with math. No, it's 11 months. But, you know, I think we need to, to move forward on that. I do think a key element to this, and I do agree, has to be the communication strategy that surrounds this, because by just definition of the real estate available on the ballot and the way the machines have to work, this is a summary document. So I think what's critical is to say, here's the summary, but here's the detail. And I think that's very important. And I'd like to hear that as we consider the question and what the communication plan is, as we get to that. So that's where I come from, and that's, that's the process as it was outlined to me. It might not have been the same. I don't, I speak for myself.
May I respond? Because you, you said a few things in there.
Sure.
Sure, go ahead.
So you mentioned the attorney's anxiety about moving forward. No disrespect, but their anxiety should not be a driving force on, on how we decide. You mentioned schedules. What's that?
I'm not anxious.
He talked about the attorneys being anxious to move forward.
Because of, because of what Mr. Mednick said before.
So, so we do have a meeting scheduled on Monday, and I think it's important to remind both the public and this group that we do have that opportunity built in. We do have until September to get on the ballot. So in terms of the timing issue, less concerned there. We all have busy lives, schedules, jobs. So, you know, I appreciate that. I have been engaged and investing time, too. So I'm respectful of that. A couple of things that are concerning is both the claim that a lot of people are engaged, not a lot of people are engaged, and I think we owe it to the public. In part, I don't know about the space issue on the ballot, so I can't speak to that. But the fact is, people need to understand where some of the more controversial or discussed issues lie, and we have an opportunity in parsing out the questions to, to help educate the public. And one way to do that is to, to pull out questions that have been of import to the public. I guess, for the record, I want to quote an email that we received just before the meeting, which is from Bud Morton, which says, "There would definitely be no better way to disrespect the public than to push through a vote at today's meeting on sending the CRC's recommendations to the voters as a single question." So I think he's right there. So I don't have really too much to say on the back and forth. I'm not going to land in any different place. I'm going to move to, to table the vote to a date certain of Monday, the 15th, before I want to even consider the language that I'm just seeing for the first time. I just don't even think, I'm, I'm happy to discuss it, but to be expected to vote. So at this time, I'll make the motion to table a vote to a date certain. Would you like to call for a second?
Yeah, I'm not going to second it.
No, I know, just as a chair.
Sure. Yeah, no, I know. I understand.
So to me, there's really no point in discussing the language here because I'm not going to get to a point. I'm, I'm happy to listen and engage, but for me, it's not going to move my position because I really think it's inappropriate to be voting at this time, and certainly as a single question.
Okay.
Well, I was honestly hoping that we could not talk so much about that, but actually do the sort of work of executing questions. Frankly, I would like to say to Attorney Baldwin and Attorney Mednick, if they did work on this together, I think this was very reflective of what I know I shared, and I guess what Tom must have shared regarding it. I think, I actually, I want to talk about the substance now. I think, based on what I was told, and I know we brought this here, I don't know if you got a copy of it, Nancy, but there was copies of it. So basically, I mean, I've seen these things in the past, ballot questions, and I know, I'm pretty sure there's a constitutional ballot question on...
Sorry, not sure if this is a point of order, but can you just read for the record what I'm just seeing here?
So there's like, this is just a, a copy of the State of Connecticut ballot in 2018 when there were questions on it, like referendum questions. And I guess there's going to be a constitutional question on this year's ballot. So I was made, you know, I'm, I, you know, obviously, it's been discussed how big these questions are. We were given samples of them from the attorneys so we could understand how these typically... We were given samples of them from the attorneys, so we could understand how these typically look, and just discussing real estate, how much room is on a ballot. And we have discussed in the CRC meetings and at the board table regarding, you know, how back in the day, Selectman, First Selectman Flato put copies up at the library in 2006, because there was no Fair TV, and there was no, you know, links or sending people email, and so, and I don't know if Attorney Baldwin had shared with me that he might have some of that, he had some ballot information from when we had prior charters on the ballot, what they sort of looked like, which I think they look similar to the samples we were given from the attorneys. I mean, I'm just trying to go about what everybody else does. I'm not trying to recreate the wheel here, but we're putting a ballot question on a ballot based on things that have already been decided over a period of almost a year. So I would like to talk about the substance of this language. I mean, obviously, your comments during the meeting, you know, you made a motion to not discuss it, or not vote on it, not to vote on it today. But personally, I would like to vote on it. I feel like everyone, everyone has given so much effort and time into this. Our community has weighed in, given lots of feedback. I appreciate you commenting one person's feeling on this. However, there are a lot of people who have put in a lot of time and effort, and I am willing to do the work right now with this board, elected officials, on this language, amendments, whatever we want to do, and then come up with something that we like, and then open it up for public comment on that language, and then bring it back to the board for additional discussion, amendments, changes, edits, whatever, and then vote on it to send to the Secretary of State to put on the ballot. So I'm going to open that up for discussion.
If I may, Attorney Mednick, throughout this process, has referred to the many questions that, you know, suggesting that the more controversial of the items should be the ones listed on the ballot, and that's something Attorney Mednick had said time and time again. And so it's confusing to me. I do think it's slightly disingenuous and perhaps obfuscating the process a bit, when there have been so many issues that the CRC has stated have been more contentious and controversial, and again, it's why I was really pushing to get a sense of this before I voted on approving the charter, because I thought that the public had, should have the opportunity to vote on the items that it repeatedly had talked about. So again, that didn't get support. If it's, again, just as a point of information, attorneys Baldwin and Mednick, is there an opportunity to add, to make a motion to add questions at this time? Even if I don't have the exact language, like if I think that there are issues that we should be parsing out, should I make a motion if I'm trying to encourage this body to consider more than one vote, or one more question for the ballot? How would that work?
You can make a motion to split the questions or to add new items for questions. That would certainly be before the body.
That would be a motion to amend the current motion that's on the table, but that's how you would do it.
Can...
And again, I want to say for the record, having not seen this and just hearing for the first time, I don't feel as, you know, informed to be able to, I'm willing to look at it, but I just want to state again for the record that I'm just seeing this. So I'm going to need a minute, and again, I don't know if it's appropriate to take a five-minute break so I can read it and think about it.
No, of course. I just want to say, I'm looking at it, and to me, it covers, and I just want to say that I don't, based on our joint meeting, I mean, it wasn't officially a joint meeting, but we attended the CRC's final meeting.
Three meetings.
One meeting.
Yeah.
They, my understanding, and from majority of public involved, said they were very happy, I think I heard comments like, "Democracy worked." "Our points got across." "The most controversial parts of this have been taken out, and this is a good win," or whatever, "for Fairfield." So I don't think there's anything controversial, in my opinion, and I heard that throughout comments, that we, you know, the most controversial, first of all, the form of government doesn't change at all. The RTM stays exactly the same as it is right now. And in this draft of a question, and I'll just refer to it, "Shall the Town of Fairfield Charter be reorganized, too? A, make it easier to use and understand." Okay? We all agree that they did make it easier to use and understand. B, modernize language and references throughout. They did do that. We were part of all those meetings. C, update and expand definitions. That's true. And D, make substantive changes, including but not limited to the following. One, uniform standards of conduct, civility, and operations. That's actually in the charter. That was some changes. Two, a streamlined budget and contract approval procedures. Three, allow for greater competition in Board of Education elections. That was done. That's a real thing. Four, modify Board of Selectmen vacancy process, which we actually discussed today again, but is in the charter, the revision. Five, codify the current 40-member RTM with 10 districts. That's true, too. Six, appointment of constables. Seven, codify the positions of Town Administrator and Chief of Staff. Eight, modify residency and qualification standards for certain department heads. Nine, update the Library Board of Trustees responsibilities. And 10, amend the process for updating the town seat. Those are all real things that are in this charter document that reflect what I would say are pretty much all of it, the definitions, the way it's reorganized, and the parts of it that, I mean, to me, it just dispels it out pretty clearly.
If I may respond to that?
Yeah.
I agree, it lists what those issues are, but what my concern is, by not listing them out, by parsing them out as individual questions, it doesn't really explain, it doesn't allow for the public to have an opinion about them.
Sure does.
It does.
Yes or no?
Correct, but again, there's a lot that people may agree with, but they don't agree with that one thing. And you don't give anybody agency over the more controver, we're not, by doing this, by accepting this, we're not giving agency over an individual resident or voter to be able to say, "Hey, I don't actually agree with that thing. I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater." That's a phrase I heard throughout. There's two things here that aren't listed, that I think have been of import to the public, and that's the budget process. We heard a lot about the DPW director.
It is, actually, the budget process is lifted, and you can put in, you could put in the DPW if you want.
It says allow for, it does, it says allow for greater...
Oh, that's right.
It says modify the Board of Selectmen, codify...
Positions.
Yep, modify residency.
And qualification standards.
For certain departments.
Yeah, it's there.
But again, if you just read this, it doesn't characterize...
That's why the communication plan is so important.
Obviously, you can't write on a charter question, you can't put the whole thing on a charter ballot.
That was actually the discussion, one of the discussions. I had that with Brenda separately, but I had it with the attorneys before, because it is, when you get to the ballot, there's a space limitation. So what was critical to me to go through was to make sure that there was a communication plan, and is Jim...
Right.
...the explanatory language surrounding that. And I just want, if I might, you brought up a valid point, which is the controversial items, and I want to tell you, you know, how I approach that, okay? I was actually gratified by the back and forth, and you remember, Brenda and I disagreed. Form of government, certain like that, that made for some fun conversations, right? But we disagreed on certain things, but we had the conversation, we came to a resolution, we came to what I thought was a bipartisan resolution, and that we were all comfortable moving forward. And that, to me, as I walked away from the CRC table and listened to their deliberations at night, I was very comfortable with, and that was even more brought to me, okay, by a Facebook post that was put out by the DTC, which literally, and I'm not trying to, it's just, this is what made me feel really good about the work that had been done, and the fact that it came after your 14 hours or 12 hours of conversations and all the work that everybody put in, which was, "We thank the CRC for listening to the public and eliminating this and a variety of other deeply unpopular proposals, including reducing the RTM to nine districts, requiring minority representation, giving the First Selectmen the power of conflict mediation and resolution, and more. We are greatly, we are deeply grateful for all the members of the community that took the time to tune in, stand up, speak out on charter revision. Your vocal engagement helped ensure that the unpopular proposed changes to the town's charters, changes that likely would have been rejected if put to a public vote, remain off the ballot. This in turn helps ensure that many non-controversial changes and much-needed improvements to our charter have the chance to be fairly considered and voted on in November. This process, though messy at times, was an excellent example of democracy in action, and last night's CRC vote was truly a win for all Fairfielders." I thought that was, it came from the opposing party, but I agreed with it. I thought this was a nice summary and said that the controversial items were off the ballot, so that we could move forward. And then I think that Brenda's done a nice job, you know, saying, "Hey, here's what the communication strategy is going to be," at least to me, she's got to discuss it with us, as well as this is what the ballot's going to look like. So that gave me a lot of comfort. And it is messy to see the sausage made. I mean, we all said that, right? Democracy's messy, and it should be, but it is.
And I appreciate that commentary, but I would say that this isn't about Republicans or Democrats.
Right.
You could look, that most, you know, voters in the town, I think, are actually unaffiliated. So the point is, the public has the right to decide on those issues.
Sure. And they've had 22 public meetings, they've had several meetings between our two bodies, they're going to have, and I think, again, I'll go back to it sounding like a broken record, I'm going to hold the administration to a communication strategy that makes sure that they're well-informed, to the best of our intent, and that the, you called it the explanatory language.
Explanatory text.
Explanatory text, which if you could explain, I think that's all critical, to make sure that we get an informed electorate that can vote this up or down. That's it. That's how I approached this, and this was very helpful, for making me feel better that the controversial issues had already been addressed.
We are going to agree to disagree.
That's okay. That's what friends do.
Here we are. I think it's too bad that the voters won't have a chance to decide on these individuals.
They do.
Nancy, listen, we're elected officials, and I think you said it during one of the meetings, and, you know, sometimes we have to make the decisions, right, about what's going to be going on. And listen, I spent a lot of years in Hartford in the minority, and there would bills come out, and 90% of that bill, I really liked, really liked it, and then there was like that 10%, I didn't like. And so, you know, I would be put in a position of having to vote against legislation I liked, because there were parts of it I just didn't like, and I didn't have control over getting that 10% out. I think that if we do a good job of informing the public, this process has been, again, I'm going to say it, transparent as hell. I mean, oh my God, you can watch every single moment of this year-long process, if you wanted to, any person in this town. And the bottom line is that this is a governing document that mostly impacts elected officials and people who work for the Town of Fairfield, who have to operate under it, and to make sure we're following our rules and doing the right thing. I think that if we do, as Tom said, and I would like to share that now, I just put some notes down, about how we would communicate to the public. So obviously, we can't write this big soliloquy on the ballot, but we can have, and again, I think this language is actually really good. I think it hits all the points of what's in the charter, but then obviously, we'll send out information about, here's what this is, here's what that is, you can click on this. So one of the things I thought, I know that the Register of Voters sent out a postcard with a QR code on it, because they changed a lot of the polling locations, and people could just take their phone and go like that, and then up came the link on the town website, how to, where to go. We could do something very similar. We could have a direct link to the charter. We could have a link to the red line changes, or whatever yellow they did, whatever we agree. We could have a summary of the changes, what each of those changes mean, and then people can see it. We can, you know, saying, "Hey, this November, there's going to be a ballot question regarding our revision of our town charter. You know, come on, go to this website or use the QR code to find out more." We can have, we have to apparently, according to Attorney Mednick, print the entire charter and put it in the newspaper, and it's a requirement, state statute. So obviously, we don't have that many newspapers anymore, but we thought that like an insert into the paper, you know, like a little charter insert with the language, which we have to do anyway statutorily, we would do that. We could, obviously, I could send out special charter newsletters with links, like I've done, almost nearly 30 newsletters on charter, links to all the meetings, Fair TV, discussions, they could hear everything, read all the minutes, read all the emails, read all the changes, and read the actual final document, so then people could see it in a summary. We could start posting it to the town's Facebook page, to the town's Instagram page. We can provide copies in the senior center in the town library. We can gauge outside organizations to help us, like the League of Women Voters, because that's, which I actually was surprised they weren't involved during this process, you know, because they're always about valid questions and things. So I was going to reach out to them and say, "Can you help us, you know, educate the public about what this question means and what it is, and so they can read about it?" Also, that group, I remember, I can't remember their name, who runs it, but it's called Know Your Reps. They did a really nice job of highlighting candidates to residents, so maybe they could help us with getting out information that way. So those are some of the things. Op-ed pieces in the local newspaper in October. We can ask The Patch, who's here today, and I believe Fairfield Citizen is maybe, there's, yeah, there's Josh, he's on WebEx. We could ask them to write stories ahead of the election and provide information.
Sorry.
We could send out...
As a point of order, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure this is germane to the actual questions, because I feel like we haven't...
Right, I'm just saying, these are some of the things we can do. I'm trying to ease your mind that, you know, we can't obviously explain everything in full detail on the ballot, but there's ways we can continue to inform and update and educate our residents, so they can make a good decision on election day. And maybe there's, you're right, Nancy, there might be one or two things in here. They might say, "Oh, I really like, you know, what do we have here, 10 things? I like nine of them, or I like eight of them, but you know, I'm going to vote against it because I don't like all of them." So that's just my commentary on it.
Can I make a motion to separate out each of the items as a question?
10 questions on the ballot?
Actually, be more, be closer to 13, 14, 13.
13 questions?
Yeah.
I'm making a motion to separate out the questions under the "be it for the resolve" clause.
Right.
Someone want to call for a second, even if there isn't one?
Yeah, just give me a minute. Typically, you don't have to do that. Someone usually does typically seconds. Listen, I'm happy to give a second to have this discussion.
So Attorney Mednick, can you expand or expound on what other towns do typically? Is it, because again, I'm going on two things. One, what I heard, and I'm attributing it to both Commissioners Winn and Icona, saying, "Let the voters decide." Sorry if it's on this, if it's not correctly to you, Commissioner Winn, who's here in the room. But, you know, the "let the voters decide" mantra that we heard around the RTM discussion, and just going back to what you had said repeatedly throughout the process about any of the more discussed, salient, controversial was used, even though maybe in the end, they weren't controversial, but the ones that were advocated for, you kept saying, let's, you know, you could put those on the ballot. So if you could talk about both that opinion and what's changed, and also what other towns typically do?
I don't know what you mean by what's changed. I don't write, I don't make decisions here. Traditionally, in most of the towns that I represent, I can tell you about tonight, where Hartford is going to be approving one question, and there are controversial where Hartford is going to be approving one question, and there are controversial matters within the body. The one question is, do you support the final report of the charter commission as passed by the city council? I imagine Hamden in two weeks will be doing roughly the same thing, and they're actually going to have a four-year term for mayor, which is traditionally the kind of item that I recommend that they separate, because they could be controversial. And so.
And Attorney Mednick, just to jump on that for a second, just because you hit it, let's look at what Fairfield's done. Literally, the language on a charter change in 1997 was, shall the proposed charter of the town of Fairfield be adopted? That was it. In 2006, to your point, the two items were.
That's transparent.
Right, the two items in 2006 were exactly as you just pointed out, and I didn't know you were going to say that, which is why I jumped in, were the change in terms for the Board of Selectmen, the Town Clerk, and the Board of Education. The third item, how's this for transparency, shall all other provisions of the revised Fairfield Charter be adopted? That was it. So the, it's.
Wow.
Sort of.
Well, Mr. Flynn had jumped in on you, so I just wanted to.
My apologies.
So I'm just going to do the same.
Yeah, go for it.
If I may.
Yeah, sure.
As per, I think it was Judy Ewing even said, that the reason that was in 1990, or 2006, was that was the sort of controversial issue, and I would say, rather than perhaps answering with just two towns that aren't doing it, is there a percentage, I'd like to know, of towns?
I don't know if there's a percentage. I mean, I've provided.
You know, you mentioned two towns, so I was curious.
It varies, and, but most of the 35 charters that I've done, 30 charters that I've done over the years have been very, very few questions, and, and again, where there is a true controversy, and I'm not going to comment on whether something's controversial or not in this list, but I would tell you, there's probably nothing on this list that I would look at and say is controversial enough for you to segregate it into a separate question. And I think that what many of the towns decide is, and I've tried to develop these omnibus questions, which have become fairly popular in towns, because they really do disclose a number of the items in the document, and the risk you run, the risk the Board of Select Persons runs, or the city council, or the town council, or the Board of Aldermen runs, by doing one question is if they've made a miscalculation and there is a controversial item that they didn't realize was controversial, they lose. It's a judgment that they make. And, and so, so the real question becomes, you know, so I can't give you percentages, I can tell you that the types of issues that I have recommended that they put on as a separate item tend to be things that are major issues about, do you want to move to a city manager form of government, to a council-mayor form of government from the form that you have? Do you want to have a separate election for a Board of Education in a by-election? Those types of things. But again, as I say, in one of the communities I'm dealing with right now, I don't think they consider the four-year term for mayor controversial anymore, so I think they're going to do one question.
And so I would push back and ask two things. What, one, what is very few mean? Because it seems to me that one or, you said very few, both in questions.
Ask your question.
I am, I am, thank you. The discussion could be, you said that there were few, both few towns and a few questions. So my, I would push back and say that a few questions is better than one question, and perhaps as a compromise, we could look at what a few questions could look like on the ballot rather than.
It's a local judgment. It's a local judgment for the appointing authority. There's no science here. If the people want to make political judgments about what the question should be, that's fine. Make the motions, try to get them through. It's a, it really is a political judgment, not a legal conclusion, and, and so there is risk involved in doing an omnibus question, but I leave it to the local, the local officials, the majority or the entire body of the local government, to make that determination. And, and so it's for you to make that determination as to whether or not anything in this list or other items that might be added to this list are controversial enough where they should be segmented and included, included outside of the, of the item. And so there's no science here, you have to make a judgment.
So given that, is it appropriate to get a sense of the body of what that might look like, if there are questions that we would consider parsing out?
So, could you, I mean, would you? I mean, I, I, I think I weighed in already at the board level in front of both of you that I like the way this is, I think it touches the salient pieces of it in a very sort of easy-to-understand, excuse me, manner, but if you think, I mean, do you want to?
Well, I would say.
Say how you would, I mean, obviously, I have to be honest with you, Nancy, I mean, we do have a motion in a second on, you know, parsing this out. You know, Tom mentioned 13 questions, I mean, I do think that's a little bit laborious for our voters.
Yeah.
I mean, oh my God, they're going to be in there going, what, you know.
No, no, I, I don't.
They're going to get to five and go, I'm done.
I disagree. I mean, to me, you know, I think we've talked about five issues that keep coming up, and I, I think I've mentioned them throughout the course.
So do you have some idea about, would you like part, do you have some amendments or ideas?
Well, again, in the, for the purpose of discussion, to me, the questions that keep, kept coming up were the size of the RTM. I mean, they're listed here. The chief administrative position, the budget process constables, and the DPW director, as called out. I mean, again, they're, they're here in this list, but I think that that's, you know, the compromise and the discussion is where, where the rub is here. So that's why I want to get a sense of the body, if there's an appetite to, to reach some sort of a compromise, rather than having it be a single question.
Right, so, I mean, what you just said, I'm just trying to, you're saying you want to, are you saying you want to parse out four of these separately?
I just mentioned five things.
Five?
And again, for discussion purposes, to get a sense of where the appetite might be.
I think that's still a lot.
Again, putting it out there as those are the five important ones to me.
I'm just trying to have a conversation with you.
Yeah.
A working discussion. So Attorney Mednick's saying that even a four-year term, now that's a big deal. I remember in 2006, that was a big deal for us, for our town. You know, our town was like, oh my God, you know, we always had two years, you know, accountability and all this. That was really big. And so, but I personally don't feel, because we didn't change, you just said, mentioned the RTM being controversial, right?
Being an.
I don't think it's controversial, because it's not changing.
Well, it is, the language is changing. It would limit the cap. It would change that cap number from 50, what is it, 56 to 40?
Right, and I think that's confusing to the voters, because I don't think the voters, number one, know how many RTM members we have right now, and that we could have 56. But that discussion was had pretty, pretty deeply during the CRC meeting, that we couldn't even parse out 56 members in 10 districts.
Right, but the point being, again, bring it to the voters, as was said around this very issue, let the voters decide. So my point is, I'm not drawing a line in the sand, except to say, the line is at no compromise. To me, yeah, there are five things, and controversial may be the wrong word. They are items of import that again and again, we have heard from the public around, and I think.
We've heard from certain members of the public a lot, and a lot of the public not at all. When I look, and I'm not saying I'm against discussing your motion, Nancy, that's not what I'm trying to say, I was actually astonished when I looked at the old language that I read just a few minutes ago that was on the ballot, and how far we've actually come from, you know, shall the proposed charter of town of Fairfield be adopted, which that doesn't even, I mean, we've got one sentence at the top for that, and then we go on for an entire paragraph laying out the 10 most substantive items, which, you know, in my mind, having gone through the process, none of them are controversial anymore. They're, they're, they've been discussed, but they've been wrestled to the ground ad nauseam. And, and I do like what Attorney Mednick said, because it's right, that A, it's a political judgment, and B, when you do it in an omnibus way, it's a risk. It's, it's a very fair comment. That's, that's, and it's whether we want to take that risk or not. But being that the most controversial elements were wrestled to the ground and resolved by the people that were, and resolved, by the way, doesn't mean that everybody got what they wanted, right? There was compromise involved and discussion involved, it doesn't mean that everybody's happy. But I think, as evidenced, it shows that everybody was, thought it was a much improved document.
If I may respond to that, because.
You absolutely can.
Yeah, you said, you know, some members of the public we've heard from not at all, and, you know, we've all heard that, that mantra, your, your vote is your voice, your voice is your vote, and this gives people an opportunity to, to use their voice, those that we haven't heard from. You know, one of the, the concern is, in the language as it exists, is there's, it's actually swaying people, because you're saying it's modernization language. I'm not saying it's not true, it's just, again, by parsing things out, it's allowing people to make their own informed decision, to giving those who have not perhaps participated, those who have been participating, an opportunity to use their, their voice.
I don't know, what does that, what does that mean? I'm trying to.
Which part?
The last part, the.
Using your voice as your vote?
Well, well, here's.
Or your vote.
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say on that regard is, of course, everybody's vote is their voice, but the people that felt passionate one way or another about these issues, right, presumably over the course of the last year, have followed what's actually gone, gone through. And if they haven't, with the communications plan as laid out, they're going to have the opportunity to educate themselves in the last 60 days before the final vote. And, I mean, it is, I, I think Attorney Mednick nailed it, again, I mean, I hate to be a broken record, that it's a risk that this goes down because you've put it in an omnibus sort of way. And in fact, it's a risk because we've actually laid out what, what the biggest items are, which haven't been done in previous charter revisions.
And then we're falling slightly short by not allowing the voters to.
How? I mean, we've allowed.
By, I mean, again, we can, we can go in circles and disagree, so, you know, I don't have an interest in doing that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If I can make a case to persuade you, I think it's doing a disservice, and I don't.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand. And thank you for that.
Can I ask for a bio break?
What?
He would like a bathroom break.
Yes.
We all have.
Lots of water.
A bio break.
Oh, a bio break, excuse me, that's technology words, modernization comments, I guess. All right, everybody take a little break.
Thank you.
We did vote for the record.
Oh, can I have a motion to take a break?
So move.
It's all favor. Aye. All right.
Much appreciated.
And have the meeting come back into order?
To move.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. And thank you.
Okay. Where we left off was a discussion about, or we have a motion on the floor to.
I tabled that motion and said a sense of the body, or I asked.
You made a motion to split questions, or discussion about?
A sense of the body motion.
Of, of splitting?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know what that.
We were discussing it. Okay. I mean, listen, I, you know, I, I, I want to work and obviously have a collaborative process, but the only thing I think is controversial on this whole thing is moving the appointment of constables to, from elected officials, to be perfectly honest. That to me is the biggest one. That's controversial, because you're taking away the election of a constable. So that to me, you know, other than that, I don't think anything else is. To be perfectly honest, I just want to make this easy for our residents to have the opportunity to vote. I want them to, to, to see it laid out pretty, like plainly, and then give them the opportunity to read it, to see it, to, to reach out to them, to have them be able to see if they really care enough to look more at it. And obviously, there's going to be, you know, conversations, you know, people talk, you know, to their friends, their neighbors, I'm sure Judy Ewing's neighbors all know about this. I'm surprised she's not here tonight, actually. Anyway, so, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't really, Nancy, I don't know. I just, I want to just, you know, I'm trying to do a good job here with our town, I'm trying to do something, I think, beneficial to our community, and for the elected officials and the department heads and that have to be, you know, under the charter and guard, you know, guided by it. And I do, and I said this many times in our meetings, I think this, this charter revision documents way better than it was before. It's so much easier to understand, it's, it's just, it's just so, you know, I use the word modernized, but it's modernized. So I'm not really in, I'm not really in the camp of wanting to split it out, I just, I don't know what it does. I understand your position about, you know, wanting to have the highlighted piece, but also, I think that it's, it'd be confusing to people, because the RTM, like you're saying, all right, currently 56, but really, it's been 40 for a long time, and to parse it out separately would make it seem like it is controversial, when in fact, it isn't. I mean, I guess you could pull the constable piece out, because that would be the most, you know, substantive change in the, I'm, I'm, I don't know. I'd like to, here, I mean, I, listen, it's, it's 10 of 7, and we've been here for three hours. I would like to open it up to any public who may be on to, and I would say that, I apologize, I think I kind of got lost in the moment, I didn't open it up to public comment on the first part, on the content of the charter language. So I would open it up, I think, if the board agrees and want to open it up to anybody who would like to comment, to, to, excuse me, to our board, if that's all right with the board?
Yeah, as long as it comes back to us, absolutely.
Absolutely. So we have, okay, can anyone who's on WebEx, please put their name in the chat, if they would like to make comments, and I'm going to just say again, if you didn't hear me, if you want to comment on the item number three on the agenda, regarding the revision, the final report, and/or the substance of the question, the charter question that would be on the ballot. And I don't know if everybody has a copy of this, did we post this, Prue, this language?
I don't know.
Was this posted online?
How do we comment from the.
I'm sorry?
Brenda?
Believe.
How do we comment if we're on the phone?
We'll get there. I'll go, I'll try to, try to do a round robin, in the room, WebEx phone, if that works.
Thank you.
So just for everybody's edification, we're talking about putting the charter question on the ballot. Right now, the discussion has been about one question, select woman Lefkowitz has recommended maybe splitting some out, and just for everybody's edification, it, it's, it says, A, make it easier to use and understand, B, modernize language and references throughout, C, update and expand definitions, and D, make substantive changes, including but not limited to the following uniform standards of conduct, civility and operations, two, streamline budget and contract approval procedures, three, allow for greater competition in Board of Education elections, four, modify Board of Select Persons vacancy process, five, codify the current 40-member RTM with 10 districts, six, appointment of constables, seven, codify the positions of town administrator and chief of staff, eight, modify residency and qualification standards for certain department heads, nine, update the Board of Library Trustees' responsibilities, and 10, amend the process for updating the town seal. And so I'll start with in the room. Is there anyone in the room who would like to make a comment? Okay, I will, I'm going to go to the.
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure. If you would please just go up to the podium and state your name and address, and then provide your comment. And by the way, I'm just, two minutes for all, everybody making comments, I'm going to put the current CEO, Mr. Premier in charge of the alarm. to put the current CAO, Mr. Premier in charge of the alarm bell. He's always the alarm guy.
Thank you.
Or the timer.
My name is Noah Henler. I reside at 3115 Riding Road in Fairfield. I'd like to thank you all and all the members of the committee for working so hard to revise the charter. I think it's important to update the document, and I'm grateful for all the effort that's been put into it. Clearly, it's very substantive in the matter of the changes. I think that it's invaluable for the public the opportunity to parse out in particular changes to the document, because otherwise, there may be things that, as a resident, I do not agree with that are in the charter. I also think that the current language that you've just read frames many of the changes as positive, and I'm not certain that they are.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to go to the phone. I'm going to do a round robin. So is, can someone, I don't know how many people are on the phone, because I can't see, but somebody like to make a comment up from the telephone line?
Hi, this is Amy Righiro. I'd like to make a comment, if that's okay?
Sure, Amy. Yeah, Amy, could you just state your either title or address?
Amy Righiro, 329 Greenfield Hill Road. I live in District 1. I'm also an RTM member for the town.
Okay, thank you. Sure, go right ahead.
I think that one question is appropriate. I think that anybody, first of all, I think the transparency on this has been as clear as water. It's been in every publication and in the patch and communicated all over. I think any controversial stuff at this point with changing the RTM has been removed to try to compromise. And, you know, I think that that was really, you know, a nice, you know, a good thing to do so that we could move forward with this. So I think one question is fine. I think anyone can get the information if they're looking for it. And, you know, I think that that would be appropriate. I'm also a little bit, I've listened to a bunch of these calls, and it seems, you know, listening to it today, it just seems like there are questions being asked that I'm not even following why they're being asked, when I've only listened to, you know, half the calls, and it's been explained on the ballot timing and stuff. So that's just a statement I'd like to make.
Okay, thank you very much, Amy. We're going to go to the WebEx, and the first person in the chat is Roger Torio. Go ahead, Roger. We can't hear you. I don't see you either.
Yeah, he stepped away. He's the third guy from the...
Yep, I see now.
Oh, here he comes.
Here's Roger. Roger?
Yes?
Sure, can you provide your comments?
Name and address.
Your name and address. Your name and address, please.
Okay, Roger O'Tory, 1310 Melville Avenue. And my comments are, there were some comments that were made before about how you could find out all about this changes in the minutes and all this other stuff. If you try that for the constables, you're not going to find very much. It supposedly came from the probate court. There is no testimony from the probate court in the minutes at all. There's nothing about, a lot of it was basically in the window, rumors, all that type of stuff. I think you should switch out the constables as a separate question. Let the public decide what they want to do with it. Because really, nothing, the way it was handled by the Charter Revision Commission, it was all very underhanded. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go back to in the room. Sure, go ahead.
Sarah Matthews, 230 Penn Field Road. I just first wanted to thank Nancy, Brenda, Tom, Jim, and obviously Attorney Mendick for their time, as well as everyone else who has attended, who has listened. I think, look, all of the controversial issues, and I've watched all the, if I couldn't attend, I would watch the meetings. I mean, you can. Everything's been pretty open and more transparent than I've ever seen in the 37 years I've lived here. And so, my whole thing is, the controversial issues, they've been removed. I would say that this question, if people, people will have 60 days, two months, to actually know that this is going to be on the ballot and do their homework. It is your American right and civic duty to vote. And when you vote, you should try to be as best informed as you can. So to me, after all this has been said and done, separating out into separate questions, I mean, what is the purpose or intent? You have already provided enough to the public to give them everything they need to make a yes or no decision on it. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you again very much. I know this is a huge deal, and I appreciate you bringing forth this whole, you know, this whole ordeal, because I know that, you know, it's long overdue. So thank you.
Thank you. Ordeal's a very accurate word. Okay. So we're next, going to go to the phone lines. Whoever, is there anybody on the phone left? Is there anybody on the call-in line who would like to provide a comment? Do they have to do something like unmute, mute, unmute six? No, but if the phones...
It would be star six if they want to unmute.
If there's anybody who's on that call-in line, you have to hit star six to actually be heard if you want to provide a comment? Okay. Okay, I'm going to go to the WebEx chat, and I can't read that second from the top.
Okay, it says KLB. Whoever KLB says, I have a comment.
KLB?
Yeah, Kathy Braun.
Oh, okay. Can you state your address and then your comment for two minutes?
245 County Ridge Avenue. First of all, I do think you should wait till next week. You have till the 19th to do the questions. And still, actually, you have some, the 19th to vote, but I realize you already voted, but you have until September 8th to get it on the ballot for the questions. You don't have to do the questions tonight. But regarding the substance of the questions that you're putting forth, question A, make it easier to use and understand, I think that's an opinion, not a fact. I don't think that should be something you expect people to vote on. They can make their own determination. And if you have it as part of one overall question, they can't separate that out. Some people might not agree with that. Question number two, streamline budget and contract approval procedures, again, I think that's an opinion, not a fact. It should, you should actually state what the change is somehow. Competition on the Board of Ed, that's number three. Again, find a way to state the change. I don't think, I think that's more of an opinion. Codify the current 40-member RTM with 10 districts. You're actually not doing that. That's not accurate. What you're actually doing is reducing the cap from 56 to 40. That's what the actual change is. That should be stated accurately. It's not accurate the way it is. And that should be a separate question. That is still controversial, and that is a significant change. That's the legislative branch of our government. The CAO, that's still a major change. That never was a job before that would need it to be in the charter. You're adding a new position in the charter that was never there before, and you're basically mandating it, and that should be a separate question, especially since it's not having any oversight other than by the first select person. It's not really acting like a town manager. It's more someone assisting the first select person. So, I don't think it should be in the charter at all, but if it is, it should be a separate question. Changing the requirements for department heads, there are some controversial ones, including residency requirements for police, as well as the DPW requirement for license. That remains controversial, and that's not spelled out. Nobody's going to know what that means, and it should be separated and spelled out. That's controversial and it's significant. So those are my suggestions, and if you don't put these things on separate questions, you could end up throwing the baby out with the bathwater. People are going to vote against it because they don't like those separate things that are all subsumed within the larger question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Back to the room. Phone line, did any, does anybody on the phone line want to say something? Okay, back to the WebEx. Bill Gerber.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good. Yeah, thanks for taking my question, Bill Gerber. I'm on the RTM, District 2. I just wanted to say I agree with Kathy Braun. I think there are, well, for me, there are a few questions that really are significant by most standards, although not as controversial as some of the initial proposals. They're still sort of worthy of breaking out by any, by the standards that I'm used to seeing in other charters. And I do, I do want to say that, you know, I've looked at a lot of charter revision processes in other towns now, and I think if we have one question, I believe, from what I've seen, will be in the minority, in a very small minority. And so I know Attorney Magnick is working on a couple like that, but I think like 10% or less of the ones I've seen, at least, are single questions. And some of the questions that are broken out are not more, some of them are, you know, bigger questions, but many of them are similar questions to sort of adding a senior, you know, town official. So I do believe the Chief of Staff and the Chief Administrative Officer should be broken out. I believe the RTM at 40, while it's definitely not as controversial as going to 30, you should at least give the public a chance to weigh in on the, reducing the cap. Although, you know, some of these things are just, you know, they're just giving the town, the townspeople a chance to weigh in, but, you know, you could probably make the case in your, in your marketing document, but they make, the town, I think, is going to feel more comfortable if you break these out. They're going to feel like, you know, people care. Not everyone has been paying as close attention as a few of us, who have been very, very deeply involved in this and actually helped, you know, fix errors and stuff like that. But, you know, there are people that wait to the last minute, and they're going to call us, and they're going to say, what do you think? And, you know, I think it'll be a much more positive, a much more positive response that many of us can give if some of these questions are broken out. And, yeah, I mean, I think there's a good chance that, you know, a lot of them could pass, but, you know, I think you should do it just, really, just to show good faith. And again, I think we'd be an outlier if we don't. But thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I'll come back to the room. And phone. And then, yeah, I see that. So I see Karen McCormick is up next, and then she mentioned that Tom McCarthy would like to speak after as well, because I don't think he knows how the chat works. So, go ahead, Karen.
Good evening, Karen McCormick, 305 Winnipeg Drive, also a member of the RTM in District 2. I have followed somewhat from a distance this entire process, and I've availed myself of either recordings or watching the meetings live. I think I might have even have attended one in person, perhaps. And I also echo the sentiments of many people that have spoken here about my gratitude for all the hard work and countless hours that both the Board of Selectmen, the Charter Revision people, Attorney Baldwin, Attorney Mendick have put into this process. I'm amazed at, you know, the dedication of everybody and the amount of time and effort that's taken to get to this point. I believe that this process has been beyond transparent. I mean, it's been the most transparent process. Everybody in the public has had ample opportunity to weigh in on the minutia issues and the big issues. And I think if we've gotten to this point where it's gone from charter revision, I don't even know how many meetings, tens and tens and tens of meetings, back to the Board of Selectmen, back to the charter revision, with public comment, pretty much at, many of the, at least the end, the end meeting, the last, I don't know, month and a half or so, I think there's been public comment at most of them, the public has had a chance to weigh in and to determine if they, if they have an interest in this process, to determine what exactly they'd like that document to look like as it's presented to the voters. And I think, you know, as we get closer and closer to putting it on the ballot, you know, this becomes a process where it should be funneled down to a product where the voter can look at it, you know, not spend hours sitting there reading it, because they're not going to have that kind of time on Election Day to do that. But if they're that interested in this process and they really want to make an informed decision, they need to be responsible, and they need to check into what this, you know, referendum is all about and what the questions are. So I believe that one question, that clearly outlines what exactly is being asked of them, makes the most sense here, and certainly relying on Attorney Mendick's expertise as to how it's done in other towns and cities and municipalities, makes sense to me. And for all those reasons, I think that at this point, the process has been transparent. The public has been more than informed, if they've wanted to be informed, and if they want to be informed right up until Election Day, they can access the information. I'm sure it'll be published on the website and newspapers, as First Selectwoman Cupchik has mentioned. And they will have the chance to educate themselves and to make an informed choice. And ultimately, it'll be up to them if they want to give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. But I think at this point, we need to move forward and just put it before the voters as one question. Thank you very much for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Shut up.
Okay. Do you want to...
Tom.
All right, Tom McCarthy, can you hear?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Could you just give your address, too?
Yeah, 15 Lovers Lane, currently Commissioner with the WPCA, in case everybody's interested in that. By and large, I want to echo what Karen just said. I think the amount of information provided, made available to the public, it's comprehensive up to this point for anyone who's had the mind to follow the proceedings. That said, you know, questions of this nature, how far do you get into the weeds? And there's no limit to that. I think if anybody has followed it and has taken upon themselves to educate themselves, which is what they need to do ultimately, that information is out there. And for that reason, I would agree completely with what Karen just said, that the question on the ballot should be limited to a single question.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Tom. I see Jill Vergara there on the chat.
Yeah.
Hi, thank you, Jill Vergara. I'm an RTM representative for District 7. I just wanted to note that the majority of the work that occurred with this charter revision really happened largely in June, July, and August. And these are all months that we know that so many in our town are away on vacation. I've been hearing from people saying they don't understand why so many of these decisions were being made right now. And I do think that it's really important to put these as separate questions. I think it empowers the voters to make these decisions on their own. If it were just up to me, I think that there are a few questions that I would want separated out, but it's not up to me. I think it's better for the voters to have certain questions that have been raised repeatedly throughout this process, put in as separate questions so that they can make the determination themselves. This is all about empowering the voters. That's all it is to me. And you do that by separating out these questions. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone on the phone line who would like to comment? Anyone in the room for any final comment? Oh, okay.
Hi, Brian Cafarelli, 129 College Place, the former chairman of the Charter Revision Commission.
Woo-hoo!
My...
Emphasized "former."
My illustrious vice chair pointed that out, and he said, we are out of business officially this evening, so thank you all very much. I was going to speak on the prior agenda item, an urge passage. It was a lot of work, as you all know, and a lot of consensus building. I do think, you know, I know it's been reflected upon earlier, but there was a nice article about how the CRC did listen to the public and eliminated a variety of unpopular proposals that they were grateful for and that were, would be off of the ballot and in turn would ensure that many non-controversial changes and much-needed improvements to our charter would have the chance to be fairly considered in November. So I had actually hoped and thought there would be unanimous passage, and quite frankly, I'm disappointed and saddened that it wasn't. But as to the, and just with regard briefly to the timing of this, this... But as to the, and, and, and just with regard briefly to the timing of this, this has been a robust process going on since last September. So we didn't just start working in July, June, and August. We've been at it, maybe some people started paying attention in June, July, and August, but we have been hard at work since day one, listening and then actually working, listening to experts and, and changing based on a lot of input that we received. So I do take exception with that. I would, I would support and echo a lot of the comments about confining this to one question. I think that what remains is not controversial, and it would result in a lot of ballot confusion if you tried to separate it out too much. As you've seen from examples that you referenced, I haven't seen those, but I've looked at others, it is better to be a little more concise with these things and not confuse the voters and have too many questions, because they will be trailing off. I mean, sometimes the ballot may spill over to the backside of the, of the, the question could go on the backside of the ballot and people just don't answer it. And so you could lose some valuable changes that people actually do support if they took the time to go through and answer all those questions, which really I don't think is necessary at this point. I mean, if there was one thing that was burning, I would, I would agree. And in fact, we did, and there was reference to that earlier to tonight, that we had said that there should be separate ballot questions. And we did. And we actually said that we would recommend it in our transmittal letter, that we would ask this board to separate out ballot questions that we thought were controversial that we would be sending forward, in particular the size of the RTM. That was said and done. To actually bring up the fact that you can go to 56, I think would have people's heads spinning, that they don't even, you know, it would again lead to confusion on the ballots. So I, I would urge you to, to, to make it concise, to try and avoid confusion, and to keep it to one question. And thank you again for all of your work.
Thank you, Brian. And thank you for your work.
Congratulations on your retirement.
So can I just see that paper you read, you referred to from earlier, Tom?
Sure.
Can I make a comment based on what the Commissioner, the former Commissioner just said?
Note, yeah, sure, go right ahead.
So a couple of things, and I want to thank the former Commissioner, his Vice Chair, his former Vice Chair, and the rest of the committee, because I, I do appreciate the hard work. I've said it from, from the start, that I wish you well. It makes me sad and disappointed too, frankly, because I want to stand unanimous and united. I wanted to. I, I would say that parsing out the questions is not confusing if you're asking two or three additional questions. I don't think we need to sort of dumb this process down by saying that the, the voters can't have agency in educating themselves. One of the, the speakers, Ms. Matthews, had said that it's incumbent on us, Ms. McCormick repeated it, that it's incumbent on the community to educate themselves. And I think that's true, and I think it speaks to separating out questions. I'm afraid that my vote today, although I think with some compromise, I might be willing to, to sort of be able to support it publicly, I'm afraid that it would be representative of where the public is, that if they don't give the chance to have, if they're not given the chance to have agency over specific items, let's take away the word controversial. Let's use the word contested. Let's use the word discussed, because I don't think an item needs to be, quote, "controversial" to, to make it as a singled-out item. It is an item of signi, these, there are items of significant import. So with that, I actually would like to make a motion to parse out a specific question, and that would be to codify the current 40-member RTM, reducing the cap from 56 to 40 as a single question, as a separate single question for the ballot. So that is my motion. I'm going to make a motion, given everything I've said, to parse out the specific question to codify the current 40-member RTM to cap the number at 56, capping the number at 56 for the RTM. So again, I'd have to...
Just, just for clarification purposes, capping it at 56 is not in the revised charter language.
Making a motion without looking, that's the only way.
I just want, just be clear that the, the revised charter language that was worked on by the CRC that we took back has nothing about, 56 is gone.
I would like to codify...
We're not allowed to send back, we're not allowed to make, we are supposed to only
Fair.
Make the questions based on what's actually in the revised document.
Not having the language in front of me, I'm happy to revise my amendment, but the amendment, I think you're getting to the spirit, or I think you appreciate the spirit of what I'm moving, which is to codify the RTM language as written in the proposed charter. And I, again, I was making that motion without looking at the exact language.
So wait a minute, just to be clear, to codif, wait a minute, to, to...
To codify it as...
To take the, the question out of the main question and have a separate one?
Correct.
And leave the other ones all together? Is that what you're trying to say? I don't...
I'm simply making the motion at this moment to create a separate question.
To take out number five, codify the current 40-member RTM with 10 districts as a separate freestanding question?
Correct.
Is that what you mean?
Correct.
All right. Listen, I'll, I'll second it for discussion.
Again, I encourage us to take out the use of the word controversial as a metric, and rather to, to follow up on what some of the speakers and the callers said, to give agency to our voters, to empower, excuse me, to empower the voters to, to make decisions, inform decisions, and not to have to vote up or down based on, it's, it's not a binary document, it shouldn't be. There are some things in here which I think still concern people, that are issues of concern. And again, I voted the way I think people will vote at the ballot on, in the voting booth if it were a simple binary yes-no vote. And that would, again, it was sad and disappointing to me. So, so I'm trying to find compromise here so that that doesn't happen. And I don't think having two or three separate ballot questions is confusing to a voter. I actually think it offers an opportunity for clarity. I think transparency is allowing the voter to decide on some of the more discussed issues. So in good faith, I would encourage you to think about what I've just said.
I'm going to open up to the board for discussion.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, no, I appreciate what Nancy's trying to do and her, and her thoughts on it. When I think about the, the RTM issue, at least as I understood it, right, up until the very end, where the goalpost kind of got moved a little bit, I think the controversy came between 40 and 30, not between 40 and 56. I think everybody at the board up until, right until the last minute, had come around to the 40. And in fact, two out of the three of us, and the two were Nancy and I, said that we would actually support it at 40 versus the 30. And, and we both expressed that publicly. So, so I do wonder if it adds confusion by going back, and it seems as though we're moving the goalpost, right? Because we had said 56 wasn't even a topic of conversation, it was already at 40, right? And the whole topic of discussion was 40 and 30, as well as earlier on in the process, the minority representation. So both of the more onerous and controversial issues there were taken out of the provision. And we basically aligned on 40 as the appropriate compromise. And the reason, and I like the word codify, I know other people thought that was misleading or whatever, I didn't think it was, and don't think it is, because it's what we already have, right? So it's just really formalizing, codifying what we already have and how we've already been operating as a practical rule. And as others have said, should something change with the town, you can always go back and reopen the charter and do it again, and adjust it proactively, such as what Mr. Flato did when he changed the terms of the Board of Selectmen, or he advocated for the change of the Board of Selectmen terms and the like. So, so that's where, I, I think that's been asked and answered, and everybody came around with 40, is the way I look at it. And then all of a sudden, at the very last minute, the goalpost moved by a few select people. So that's what I'd say.
Can I ask you a...
So can I just...
Oh, yeah, I was going to ask some questions.
So, all right. I'm obviously, I'm trying to, you know, bridge a gap here. I have to tell you, after this whole process and what you just brought up today, I'm going to go with shall the proposed charter of the town of Fairfield be adopted and just be done with it, honestly. I, I just honestly, I, like, let people read about it, let, let them look it up, let them read. I mean, I thought we were trying to be really helpful by laying out all the changes so people could kind of get a sense of what is going on. Listen, I, I hear, I hear, and I've been listening to the comments for over a year now, I've read all the emails. I have to say publicly, I am a little disappointed that there wasn't unanimous support for the language. A lot of time was put in, a lot of time. And to, listen, not wanting to question a certain way and then voting against the work that we all agreed on, to me, isn't, kind of diseven, disqualifies for the, from the questioning, because if you don't agree with the substance of the language, then, then what does it matter how it's parsed out as in a question? But... I, I just don't know what to do there.
Sorry, can you clarify that comment? I don't know what you mean, that I don't have the right to engage in the discussion.
No, I'm saying I, I'm disappointed that it wasn't unanimous. After all the work everybody did in voting against the, the, the body of the work, the effort and time that went in from the Charter Revision Commission, volunteer members, and to this body, to attorneys, I mean, the amount of effort and time. I, I don't know what the right answer is here. I, I actually think that this, this question that we have in, in the resolution is actually kind of long. And then looking at the, and I don't know where it went, the ballot, can I see that again, Tom? That ballot? I mean, to me, this gives a good sense. Did you get to see this, Nancy? I mean, this gives a good sense for anybody who's paying attention, who can see this. But, I mean, it's not like there's a whole lot of room on a ballot and to, like, I don't even know if that would fit on here. So I think that needs to be taken into consideration as well, because there is a constitutional question on the ballot from the legislature. It actually looks like, and to Tom's point, I get concerned that, I've seen that before in my years of voting, that, you know, you miss something because it's on the back of a ballot. And you, the constables used to be on the back of the ballot, and people would miss those. So, listen, I just want people to, I honestly don't think it's going to make a, the people who really care about this are going to take the time, as to, to the Chairman's point of the Charter Revision Commission, Mr. Cafarelli, people who really care are going to take the time to go research, to find out what's on it. Or they're going to listen to their neighbor, or their friends, or hopefully ask questions and be, and we'll do our best to. I don't know, I don't know what the right answer is, to be honest. I don't know what the right answer is. I don't know if it should just be really plain and simple, like, you know, shall the proposed, you know, charter of the town of Fairfield be adopted? I, I don't know what the answer is.
Doesn't, I mean, just one thought, two things. One, I, shortening the questions, I imagine, makes it easier. This is, there's a lot of qualifying language.
There's just not a lot of real estate on this thing.
And again, you know, there are communities, and Mr. Gerber pointed out, Attorney Mennick, that, you know, we're not, we're not looking for 15 questions, I'm really advocating for a few, and even open to what that could look like. I just, it, it, it's a personal challenge, and I think we have to be careful in saying that, you know, just because a lot of effort and time have been spent up to this point, it doesn't somehow, that doesn't mean that we should stop because we've already put in a lot of effort and time. I mean, I think this is where the effort and, and work, it comes down to this process. This is hard work, and, and the community deserves nothing less, which is also why I've been advocating for time to think about these things. I think we do not have to push for a vote today, and you said you're not sure what to do with it. I encourage us to table it. Let's think about it. Let's think about what those ramifications are. Let's look at it from all angles, and let's give the public one more chance to weigh in, and then let's have a, a vote after we've heard from the public. We may learn something, especially because we are not required by the law, by what statute provides, to vote today. We have a meeting already scheduled for Monday. So I encourage us to take some time away from it, to reflect on all of the really important things that have been said today. So, you know, I appreciate the point of view, I appreciate that there are points of view that are different from mine, but I, I would also encourage us to take time to reflect on those differences of opinion and reflect on what's been said today, and table the vote till Monday.
So, thank you, Nancy. I, I actually disagree. I think this process has been given everything it needs. I think we were elected officials who can do this. So my question to the town attorney, can you help the board? I don't know how we determine if this, I actually like the way this is written. I think this is very, like, way more informative than any other charter question that's ever in the history of the town, but do you think it's too long? I mean, do you think it's going to fit?
Yeah, I actually had a conversation with the town clerk today, and hopefully it will fit on one side of the ballot, but there's also a chance that the ballot may have two sides anyway.
One minute. Oh, okay.
Did we pay the bill? Didn't this happen once before?
Have to redial, or how does that work?
Can I use this as a moment to use?
Okay, we were talking about the length, I was asking Attorney Baldwin.
Yeah, I, I, I could tell you that there's a good chance that the question could roll over to the back of the, of the ballot. However, the question yes or no would almost certainly be on the front side of the ballot. And it, and so I, I don't think that the length of this particular resolution as presented would be a problem in that sense. But if you had more questions than, as a former Chairman of the CRC, Mr. Cafarelli mentioned, then you do run the risk that whatever question bleeds over to the back or, or begins on the back of the ballot, that may be missed by the voters unintentionally, and you could have problems with respect to, you know, that, that question being presented.
No, I don't.
There's, there's the motion on the table?
Right.
Right.
I sent my piece on the, on the motion.
Yep, got it.
Hey, thank you for bringing it up.
Yep, absolutely.
I was using my outside voice.
All right, so if no one has any further...
Thanks.
...discussion on the motion, second on it.
Yeah, you seconded it.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. All right, we're back to the main body of the question.
So I had asked for a sense of the body, because again, I don't think it is important, because I could continue all night making motions about the five things, we could go around, but I'd love to get a sense of the body if there's any appetite to parse out a question. If the answer's going to be no, I'd love to have that on the record so that...
Understood.
You know, just because, again, I don't think we need to go around and around. I mean, to me, just to be clear, parsing out...
No, that's fair, Nancy, and thank you for that.
To me, the, the bigger issues, just so I say it for the record, are the RTM, the CAO, Chief of Staff positions, and the DPW Director, those would be the three for me.
Yeah.
But again, if there's no appetite after getting a sense of the body, I'm not... But again, if there's no appetite after getting a sense of the body, I'm not, I'll say it for the record, but we don't need to go through the motions, and so, it's not in anyone's interest.
Can I say a couple of things on that, just for a minute? First of all, the three, thanks for labeling out the three that you're interested in. Here's my view just on those three, so that, I, I wanna make sure I'm clear, right? The RTM, kind of, I addressed, it's, it's not a change. And the controversy was over 40 versus 30, not over 56 versus 40, that was number one.
Yeah.
The CAO position already exists, and I actually think that putting it in the charter and actually putting that language around it, saying, you know, who it reports to, who it gets appointed by, but it reports back to the Board of Selectmen as, as required, and putting some language around what the job responsibilities are, I actually think that's a good thing, and I don't think it's, it's an affirmation of things that were done. The DPW Director is, is the third one. The one on that, I'm gonna rely back to my, to my business experience. By training, I'm a finance guy, and by experience, I became an operations guy and a finance guy. And I've overseen the Human Resources Department, believe it or not, Sales Departments, Operations Departments, Customer Service Departments, I'm not trying to give my resume, but what I'm trying to say is, I'm not an expert in any one of those areas. What I am pretty good at is management. And it's not important that your DPW Director necessarily be an engineer. They have to know how to manage engineering. They have to know how to project manage. They have to know how to prioritize. And so I've heard some of that consternation out there in the public a little bit about, oh, they, they're not an engineer. And I think we need to be open to the fact that engineers don't necessarily make you the best manager. And a, a manager of a department such as that size and with that level of complexity isn't really doing the engineering on a day-to-day basis, managing the overall department. So I actually think opening that up is a good thing. So those are my three responses directly, and I appreciate you bringing those up very much.
And I'd love to comment, because I don't actually disagree from a business perspective what you're talking about in terms of management, but I will say, in terms of the issue, again, that is of great import and has been advocated for again and again, so I think it falls under the, to me, under the category of, like, let the voters decide.
Fair.
So, for me, I, I support what you're saying, actually, and it makes sense, as someone who manages people's living, I get it.
Right.
You know, I don't have an MBA or what have you, but I'm very qualified to manage the team that I do. So...
Yeah, I get it.
To me, again, it just validates what I'm talking about, let the voters decide. Great issues that matter to the people.
And, and I wanna go there, so thank you, because I was very helpful. On, here's my rationale overall on this, and I think Mr. Cafarelli summed it up pretty well, but I wanna state it, is I, I'm very interested slash concerned slash cognizant of confusion on the ballot, right? And when I had my part in helping draft this, that was one thing I was, I was really bent on, was to the extent we could get rid of the legalese, to, to the extent we could put it in common terms, right? And, and provide clarity as to what was going on here. That was very important for me, to make sure, and the size limitations and about, no matter what we tried to do, whether it's five questions, 10 questions, one big question, whatever it is, there's a limited amount of real estate that we have, right? And, and I was cognizant of that. The second thing, and I've said this, was really that communication plan, which I think is, is important, and as to a couple of the callers said, look, democracy's hard. Voters have to educate themselves, and we need to provide them the outlet to educate themselves and, and to actually make sure that they understand what these items mean, those that wanna take the time and effort to, to really dive into those issues. So I think that's why I was harping with the administration on the communications plan. That's why Mr. Baldwin was helping me with explaining to me what needs to be out there from a legal perspective on that, so I think that's very important. The third thing that hit me was how much more detailed we had gotten in our even one question versus what was done in prior years. I really wasn't expecting that. That was, that was a really eye-opener, when I looked and saw that from the prior years that, you know, approve the charter, yes or no? I, that, that just blew me away, that that was really what it was. And the fourth thing, I'll, I'll reiterate, goes back to that, the contested issues or the controversial issues, the things that generated the buzz, they were really already asked and answered, and no, as I'll say it again, not everybody agrees, and not everybody's happy, but we can't let perfect be the enemy of good. And I think that this document significantly moves the town forward from a governance perspective. It's, it's not written in stone, meaning it's not that it can't be changed in the future as we live and breathe with it, but I think it is a very good step in the right direction. And those are the reasons, Nancy, and I appreciate what, your thoughts on it, and I, and I thank you.
Thank you. So, okay, so, I would like to just get back to the actual language in, that we have before us, and have an actual discussion about it. Now, we've had discussions about Nancy's, Selectwoman Lefkowitz has brought up breaking out questions, and so that, we've had that discussion. Now I want us to kind of come back and focus on this actual language. I like, I agree with Selectman Flynn. I think the language is much more descriptive than has been in the past. To be honest with you, though, I could be, I could be convinced to just go back to the old language, because I think regardless, people are gonna have to go read up on it. To be like, one of our public comment was, we have to be educated on people who are running on a ballot, what their issues are, what their positions are. You have to be educated about what you're voting on. And so, I, so I go back and forth. I'm either this language, or like, do you accept the revisions to the town charter? Period. So, I go back and forth on it, but I just, I want us to, if, if, if there's any substantive, because we are going on now hour number four, and, and this is on the heels of literally hundreds of hours of discussion on this charter, hundreds, hundreds of hours. So I would like just substantive discussion now on this actual language. Is there any, from the body, is there any language changes to the current language that we have before us?
Yeah, I'd love to comment on that.
Input on that item, on this item?
Yeah.
Yes, go right ahead.
You know, again, I think it's a lot to take in. I would encourage us to table the motion, but to me, we're better off with a single up or down without this language, because I think that this is, as it's written, it's potentially misleading. It's, it's a lot to get through. I think it doesn't actually characterize potentially for some people. One of our speakers suggested that maybe it's not all positive, but it's written in the positive, and I think we have to let the voters decide, to the point of several, that several people, public comment, much of, some of the public comment was made around, you know, educating people, educating themselves. I don't think that this language really helps articulate, I think it's, it's potentially misleading. So to me, you just made the comment, maybe we're better off with a simple up or down, and I, I'm inclined to say, you know, maybe you're right, because as written, I'm not sure it's, it's the right language. But, again, I really would like time to, I'd like to be able to take time, again, remind this body that we can vote on the language. There is no rush. We have a meeting scheduled for Monday where we could easily take this up. So, that would be my hope. So, today, I will likely have to vote, again, in the, in the spirit of being completely open and being cognizant of the time, I would have to vote no, because I just don't think that we've fairly been given the opportunity to digest it, reflect on it, and think about the implication of the phrasing of the questions.
Do you have any, um, do you have any comments about what language you would change in this question?
As I said...
If you thought it would be more amenable to you?
Respectfully, I'd want time to think about it, because I don't know what the implications of the language. I do think phrasing is key. So, to me, it just feels like an impossible task to be asked to vote on this today when we have the option of time. It's not like we don't have that in our back pocket as a tool we can employ. So, to me, I don't, I don't have suggestions now that would be fair or informed.
Well, I would just say that I did, you know, I did, as was stated earlier, make it very clear that we would be voting on this today. It was on the agenda, and so I expected all of our members to come prepared to do that today.
Respectfully, I did send an email and put it in writing and made a request to the attorney, to the town attorney, to delay the vote before the agenda was set. So, again, given, given, I said that on the phone yesterday, but given that we're here...
That was after the agenda was set.
Sorry, Madam, Select...
Regardless, here we are.
It was not before the agenda was issued.
I may, I'm happy to stand corrected on that detail, on, actually, what's a minor detail since we can employ, and I did put it in writing and make the formal request to delay the vote. We have it as a tool. You can decide that that's not what you want to employ, but I think it behooves us to, to delay. So, no, I don't have suggestions.
Okay. Tom, do you have any, would you like to comment on the language? Do you have any suggested changes to language, or are you, are you fine with the way it's written now?
I'm, quite frankly, fine with the way it's written right now. I think it, I'm, I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, do I need to make a formal motion to table the vote?
Well, we...
I thought, did you do that earlier?
On the first item, I think. I don't know if I formally...
Oh, that's probably right. You're probably right, yeah.
We have a motion on the floor right now for this, though?
We do, but I think she can make a motion to table it, can't she?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
As in the first agenda item, that is correct.
So I move to table the agenda item to a date certain of Monday, August 15th, at our regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Is there a second? Carrying on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're back to the main motion, so, um... Do we have, we have a motion and a second on the floor for this, the rest of this? Is that accurate?
Yep.
And I have no further comments.
And I have no further comments on this second item.
For, for the second agenda item, and I, I believe it's...
But we're not doing the other further resolves, right?
Right, that, that was, that was, the sense of this board was to take that up separately.
So this is just for this one?
So it's just on, on the question about the question, if you will.
So, just as a point of information, the be it further clauses after this one, which is on the table for a motion, one, two, three, there are four more, those would be...
Separate votes.
Moved to a table, to a, they would be moved to a date certain, or do we not take them up?
No, that, the, I, I believe the discussion of the, the body was to take those up separately tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, yes. Okay, so, let's take this one up. We have a motion on the floor in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, the next item.
I'll move to take the next two items together. I have...
The two be it resolves?
Yeah, the charter portions approved.
Or selectmen's authorized?
You want me to read them?
Oh, yeah, because just, yeah.
Yeah, for good governance. Be it further resolved that the charter or such portions thereof may be approved by the electors of the town, shall take effect on November 27, 2022, with the exception of provisions pertaining to the term of office or the composition of an entity or function of an elected official, which shall be adjusted as set forth in the charter. And, going with Nancy's suggestion, thank you, be it further resolved that the Board of Select persons authorize the town clerk to publish and propose a revised charter in the newspaper, having general circulation in the municipality, with a notice that a complete copy of the charter is available in the town clerk's office, and that a copy shall be mailed to any person who requests a copy, as required by CGS 7191D. And moreover, a copy of said charter shall be available on the website of the town. So that's what's before us.
I don't have any comment.
Motion to approve?
And I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on this item?
None by me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item.
Third item, or the fourth, fifth item.
Should I make a motion?
Oh, yeah, go right ahead, please. Thank you, Nancy.
Just on that one?
I'll second that?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I think this, I, I, yeah, be it further resolved that the Board of Select persons authorizes the town attorney and charter council to continually review the document for errata and non-substantive editorial revisions through publication.
Motion to approve?
We have that. Yep.
Second.
A discussion point?
Sure.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote against it, consistent with the vote that I had made when we were bringing the document to the CRC for its review, that I did not authorize, was not involved in the authorization of the charter council initially. I'm not comfortable authorizing it here, so, I don't have any comment further than that, but wanted to state that for the record.
And, and I wanna add, I wanna add a thank you, though, because, you know, as, as been called out before, there's been members of the public who, who have been very, very helpful in, in kind of what I refer to as the copy editing of this, and it was non-substantive changes, but important changes much anyway, that lead to the usability and the ease of reading of it. So thank you to those people, and I would hope that continues till this is posted.
Do we have a motion on this one?
We do.
We do, and if I could echo the thanks, but I would just argue that, especially since there are writers in this room and listening, every change is substantive in its own way. Commas and punctuation and the like, the errata, are all substantive. So I wanna thank, in particular, some members of just the citizen, the residents of Fairfield who've engaged above and beyond what anyone might expect, so thank you to them.
Well, I'd like to, to speak directly to this motion, and I wanna thank both the attorneys for all their help. Not only did they help the Board of Selectmen, they were at every single Charter Revision Commission meeting, available for questions from that board. They were also consistently available to the members of this, this board, anytime they had a question, phone call, email, personal meetings, and also to, to editing the emails, the, the really huge amount of emails that came in, asking for changes, errata, all this stuff. So they do have to continue to do errata changes. Little commas in here, and I can just tell you, as a former legislator in Connecticut General Assembly, a comma's not the same thing as an actual shall or may. That's actually changes a document. So I just wanna really thank the attorneys, because frankly, we could have never, and they were utilized by the public. They, they, the public and the Board of Selectmen Charter Revision Commission kept them really busy. So thank you, I just wanna thank them for their hard work, and it was a lot of hard work.
And if I could state for the record, I look forward to receiving, as I've requested to the, both to the attorney, to the town attorney and to Judge Schmidt, I've requested just for the record, the copies of the bills for the, the Charter Council, so I look forward to receiving those and, and being able to review those. Thank you.
Can I just chime in here and remind the board that we have also pledged to create an index for the charter?
Yes.
Something that has never been done before, and that will be very, very helpful for the public and those who look through this document going forward in the future, but that's something that's gonna be worked on. Not necessarily presented to the voters, mind you, but that would be too long.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Nancy, this one, I think you were voting against?
All in favor. Sorry, I lost, I was reading.
No, you were, you were opposed to this one.
Right, so did you call for opposition? Sorry, opposed.
Okay. The next item...
Can I make a motion to add something to this item?
To what, this, this last one?
To the final one?
Let me, let me read it, and then we can amend it. So... So the item to be brought before us is be it further resolved that pursuant to CGS 9369A, the Board of Select persons authorizes the town clerk with the assistance of charter council to prepare an explanatory text specifying the intent and purpose of the proposed revised charter that is the subject of the ballot question that will be voted upon on November 8, 2022. Said final text is subject to the approval of the town attorney.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
So I'd like to make a motion to add where it says with the assistance of charter council and with input and approval of the Board of Selectmen.
I'll second that for discussion. Jim, what is the standard here?
I believe that this is optional. Not all municipalities have explanatory text, but in this case, for obvious reasons that I don't need to go into, it's very important, I think, that this be done. And it's typically and by statute, subject to town attorney approval, is by statute something the town clerk puts together. But I'm not aware of any statutory reason why you could not add the qualification requested by Selectwoman Lefkowitz.
Okay.
And if I could make a comment on why I think it's important?
Can I just ask a question to text? What is that, is that like a text that lives in the town clerk's office? So if a resident wants to come see it, can you explain that?
It's text which should be disseminated far and wide, however you can. It's text that should be kept certainly at the town hall clerk's office and will actually be at the ballot place, at the voting booth.
So with this.
Not in the booth, but at the voting location.
Now, I just want to ask, I think it's a legitimate question, considering how this process has gone. If you add this amendment in here, is this going to slow up the ability to have an actual document that people can read because of people's input?
I'm happy to.
Or is it just going to be a legal, like, the lawyers look at it, they parse it out in legal terms, they don't screw around with it?
Yeah, number one, it's got to be apolitical. It's got to be just explanatory.
Yeah, but when you add elected officials into a process where I think attorneys are supposed to like parse out what the document says without any of their own thoughts about it, that concerns me.
I think that's a legitimate concern. You could, with consultation or something with Board of Select persons, your approval, I think, may violate that statutory provision.
I don't know. I get concerned we're not going to.
But I understand the point of consulting with it.
Input and approval, my point in that is.
Yeah, I would pledge to the board, if it was its desire, to share the drafts with you and receive your comments. I mean, that's something that I do on a regular basis anyway.
Right, but if that's an approval thing where it doesn't get approved.
Right. Actual approval would be, I think, problematic. So I would take back what I said earlier because the statute does say that it needs approval by the town attorney.
I would like to see it, so I like the idea of adding it, and I do understand the statutory thing.
I think it's important to codify because having input could be disregarded. I think we've obviously sat here for four hours and debated and discussed and stretched. And I think, I'm concerned with the question as, if I may.
How about?
I'm concerned with the question as stated on the ballot. I think that there are some qualifiers that I don't agree with. I appreciate the need for it to be apolitical, but I also think that it should be, again, I am in the minority position, so there is a high likelihood that if there is something that I said that is deemed political, if it needs approval, I'm not asking for unanimous approval.
How about, hey, Nancy, I've seen this in other documents, not related to this, but in legal documents, and they add the thing, Jim, and you tell me if this is possible, with approval not to be unreasonably withheld.
I think I have to stand firm here because that's just as subjective as everything else.
Yeah.
I pledge to.
I didn't understand that.
Well, clearly, they disagree.
Can I also make a clarifying point that this is not about the town clerk because she's an exemplary public servant? I have the utmost confidence in Betsy Brown. This really is about our ability to weigh in, have input, and approve the process, not by majority.
I'd just like to jump in, though, because I really think that this is, weighing in is passed due. Like, I mean, that this is, once passed, the charter is a living document with words. It's a legal document. And when you get politicians saying how they think about a legal document, and then if it stops the, if it halts the ability for our residents to have a document at the polls that they can pick up and read because somebody didn't like something, or they, I just think that gets, this leaves, like.
I would counter that the question on the ballot is political.
And this isn't, and.
We're working in the political arena.
And this isn't the charter itself. This is just explanatory text.
Correct, but I think it has, I'm concerned.
No, no, that's, I agree, I'm agreeing with you. I'm backing up. Yeah, it's basically saying this is what this means. So the idea, and I've gone on the record and saying the communications plan is very important to me. Now, I do, I'm trying to balance what I think is very reasonable to say, we want to see that document, make sure we're okay with it, with Jim's very reasonable legal opinion saying, we can do that, but we can't have approval. So I'm looking to split the middle here and say, can we consult? I understand that's not approval, but I have my lawyer telling me that that might be a bridge too far. So if I can go with consult, because I would like to see that and make sure that I'm okay that it.
Again, then, since there is some question, unless you are stating emphatically that we don't have legal, there is no legal privacy.
I haven't been able to articulate my opinion. I can go check with Attorney Mendick, but I'm quite sure that it's subject to the town attorney's approval by statute, and that is to take it out of the political realm, to take it out of the political area. That's the whole reason for that in the statute.
So.
So you could say consult?
And I would pledge to you that I would collaborate and consult with the body and members, but I cannot, I cannot say that it would be legally correct to have it subject to your approval.
But you can't say that it couldn't. So is this?
No, I just, I just said that it cannot be subject to your approval.
Okay, I had heard you say you would have to check with Attorney Mendick.
No, I, well.
What was the amendment, what was your amendment against the actual language?
With input and approval of the Board of Selectmen.
All right, so we're not, I'm not in favor of approval. So do you want to modify it? Or do you, are you a chart?
No, I'm not in favor of approval based on that, but I would like, if it was, what was the first word, Nancy?
Input.
Input and consult.
Input and approval she had.
But as a point of clarification, please, Attorney Baldwin, is it, you just said that you had to consult with Attorney Mendick?
I didn't say that I had to, but I said that I will.
So then is that?
I'll be right back.
Okay.
So we're taking five minutes here?
Five-minute break?
Sure. I'm good with that.
The phone's, that's not red.
Okay, so I think.
The telephone. Does that matter?
We're going through the cameras.
Oh, okay.
It disconnected.
Okay.
So to be very brief about it, Attorney Mendick agrees with my interpretation of the statute and the fact that it is not appropriate, would not be appropriate to have that explanatory text subject to Board of Select person approval.
But we could say input and consult, right? You're comfortable with that?
Yes, I'm comfortable with that.
Nancy, if you would change your motion, I'll support it.
Did we have a second on that motion?
I think we did. I think I said.
Then we'd have to revert, you'd have to.
For discussion purposes.
Pull it back, I think, and then redo it.
Okay. I mean, it's up to Nancy.
So legally, it cannot happen, so it's not even a motion that would be valid anyway. So, correct?
Yeah, that's technically correct.
So then I can't make a motion that it's not legally binding, so I will withdraw it and say with input and consultation, is that what we?
I think that's what you said.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Input and consultation of the Board of Selectmen.
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on that item?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. That's it?
The board was going to have one final vote to adopt the entire.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to.
Resolution.
I'll second it for discussion purposes. Is that just codifying what we've done here?
Yes.
Everything, the first vote, the.
Oh, it happened.
All the other votes.
It happened. Yes, that's codifying everything. That's the way I do it. So I made the motion. Did somebody second that? I think Nancy did.
Tom, I'm sorry, can you?
Sure, it's a motion for a vote on the entire document.
As amended.
As amended.
Do we have an issue that it's, it's an, okay, it's an amendment?
Yeah. As amended.
I'm losing my mind.
Yeah, I understand.
So is there any discussion on this item?
Not for me.
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Can I say aye, too? I just want to say aye.
You want to do it once, right?